Pledge allegiance to the flag. Mrs. Mallow, if you would take the role, please.
Council Nelson.
Here.
Council Coulter.
Present.
Council Shabett.
Present.
Council Leonard.
Present.
Council Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
Council Rodrick is absent and Council Lambert is still late.
Okay, we're going to open the meeting tonight and go into executive session, which hopefully will be a brief executive session, and then we'll come back into open session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two, litigation Odell versus Tiverton.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're now in executive session.
Back in open session, do we have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
So moved.
All those in favor? Do we have a second? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? First of all, let me apologize for the fact that you did have to wait, but believe me, it was necessary. I'm just going to make just some brief comments from some notes I took at our session, so that you understand the process and what we were trying to do. As most of you know, we've hired special counsel, attorney Matthew Oliverio, to represent the town of Tiverton in a matter titled Odell versus Tiverton at all. On August first of this year, an argument was held in the case relating to the matter of a default judgment, and that default judgment was vacated, which essentially means that we're back at square one, in a sense, that is. We're back in a position where this issue has to be resolved solely on the merits. And the merits in this type of case involves a matter of statutory interpretation. The next step for the town council then, and that's the step that we took tonight, is to discuss with Mr. Oliverio as our counsel, as our special counsel, what he proposed, what he thought we should be doing at this point in the further handling of the case, and also to discuss with Mr. Oliverio how we, as a town council, believed that the case should proceed at this point. I think most of you would agree that that type of discussion really is for executive session. I also wanted to explain that I scheduled this item as the first order of business tonight, really with a twofold purpose. One, it was first as a courtesy to Mr. Roggero, because I'm sure that he does not want to spend the next three or four hours with us. And also, secondly.
Oliverio.
Oliverio, I'm sorry.
You said Roggerio.
Oliverio, I'm sorry. And I'm sure that as taxpayers, you would not appreciate us having special counsel simply sitting here for the next three hours on billable time. So with that, that briefly tries to explain what we were doing in executive session. Going to the consent agenda, we have under the consent agenda the following items. Approval of minutes from regular council meeting July eleventh, twenty-eleven. Receipt of minutes from various boards and commissions. Correspondence received and filed. A request by the town clerk, Mrs. Mallow, rescheduling the public hearing to September twelfth for the economic development real estate tax exemptions previously scheduled for August twenty-second. Scheduling of public hearings recommended by the planning board for September twelfth, twenty-eleven relating to, A, recommendations of the planning board for proposed ordinance for streetlights and energy-efficient roadway lights; B, recommendations of the planning board for public hearing Article Four, Section sixteen, relative to manufactured home elderly community license expiration date; and C, recommendation of the planning board for public hearing Article fifteen, zoning board of review to allow for applicant to request special use permit in conjunction with dimensional variance. And from Councilor Nelson, a request for a copy of current fee schedule for discussion and review, which has been referred to the town clerk and solicitor for our August twenty-second meeting. Do we have any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. President, if we could remove item three A correspondence received from the Tiverton School Department regarding road repairs on Lawton Avenue, please? Thank you.
Any others to be removed? Do we have a?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve all of the consent agenda items except three A.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Mr. Coulter, relative to three A?
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to recuse from that matter, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry? Oh, okay.
Recuse from that, thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve item three A.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That completes the business under the consent agenda. There are no items under public hearings and public presentations. Acting as a board of licensing, Thomas DeAngelis, Tom's Market of Tiverton, Inc., four-nine-two Main Road, requests approval for victualling and holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Mr. DeAngelis here? Okay. Mr. DeAngelis?
Sir, good evening. If you could, just tell us a few words about the business, keeping in mind that the session is being broadcast, so other people will hear you as you describe your business.
The business is, this would be our third location. We currently have one in Coventry, Rhode Island, Warren, Rhode Island, and hopefully we'll have one in Tiverton, Rhode Island. It's a, not a huge store. It's about under nine thousand square feet we're looking at. It's service-oriented, prepared foods, grocery, full-service, but on the smaller and accessing the service and quality side. The local produce, whatever we can get locally, we'd like to do that. I don't know if anyone here has been to Warren location, it's not that far from here. We've opened that at October of oh-nine, that was opened. And we felt that Tiverton was a good fit for what we do.
How many employees will you have?
Well, I would say initially, there would be about twenty. Initially, and we'll go from there. That's what we basically started off with Warren, now we're probably up to about thirty-two, thirty-four.
And, Mr. DeAngelis, this is at the location of what most of us know as the former CVS?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. DeAngelis?
I just wanted to stress, there's been a lot of conversation about trying to bring a grocery market back into Tiverton, and it appears that we may have one here, especially in the northern part of town, so I certainly wish you all the success with that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Best of luck.
Good luck, Mr. DeAngelis.
Under appointments and resignations, we're dealing with appointments to the Recreation Committee Personnel Board, Tiverton Housing Juvenile Hearing Board. The first one before us is Recreation, and there is one vacancy for a three-year term expiring six-thirty, twenty-fourteenth. We have an appointment request by Robin A. Mallow. Is Ms. Mallow here today? Mrs. Mallow, have you heard from Robin Mallow as to whether she was going to join us?
Everyone was called, but.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Lambert, just so I understand, we have one vacancy and one applicant?
Right.
So I'd make a motion that we appoint Ms. Robin A. Mallow to the vacancy on the Recreation Committee with our appreciation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. President, I do not support that motion. I don't know Ms. Mallow, she may be an outstanding person, but before we appoint her to a committee as important as a Recreation Committee, I'd at least like an opportunity to learn a little bit more about her and to meet her. I don't think it's too terribly burdensome to have her come to a council meeting to introduce herself to all of us and to public.
I just, I know the audience doesn't have the benefit of, we have a two-page application and a three-page resume here, so we certainly have a lot to look at. Is it our practice to request their presence, or simply to advise them that? I'm sorry?
Policy states we invite them to come before the council.
And if they don't, we normally don't appoint them. I don't think the Recreation Committee is non-functional with this opening. We're not impacting the work of the committee.
I think what Mr. Leonard is stating is, in fact, it has been our policy. I don't recall any appointments that we've made without somebody showing up and at least talking to us briefly. This may have just been some oversight, some misunderstanding. It would just be my suggestion that we continue this issue of this appointment to Recreation to our next meeting, if that's the.
I'm content to withdraw the motion, but I would respectfully suggest then that we need to change the wording of our letter and turn it up a little bit from invitation and something along the lines of, you know, that we would respectfully request that they present, because last time I checked, we had a lot of trouble filling a lot of boards and vacancies, and so I'm just delighted when people step up. And I don't know that just an invitation given other concerns, so I'm happy to withdraw that motion. Can we agree to at least send a follow-up that? And I know we were going to confirm our policies anyway, Mr. Pelletier and I are working on that as well, but hopefully we can confirm this in the future.
You know, it might be, I don't know if this is overly burdensome, but indicating that it's been previous policy of the council to only appoint after formal viewing. I don't know. Well, or not policy, but it's been the practice of the council. It just alerts people that if they don't show up, there's a good chance that.
We only called everyone on Friday, although she just got it in the night. Holiday yesterday, I don't know.
That's fine.
Is that the sense of the meeting then, that we'll just continue this issue, this appointment?
I'm not sure I heard the magic words. I think what we're doing is mandating that in order for them to serve, they must come before the town council.
Correct, which is the.
So that should be the message that the clerk gives the person.
And that's our adopted policy.
So let's codify that as a policy? I support that.
And just so we're clear, this is different. We don't require licensees permits to appear. And obviously, they're not applying to be a part of the government, but I just think there could have been some misunderstanding here, so.
And I think it's a good point by Mr. Leonard. I mean, some of these appointments run up to five years. So I don't think it's asking too much, sort of, to see who. For some of the members of the town council, we may not know all of these people personally. The second group of appointments was under the Personnel Board. We have one four-year vacancy expiring June thirtieth, twenty-fifteen.
Mr. Lambert, with your pleasure, may we go ahead and take item C out of order, as I believe Ms. Shabett needs to recuse items B and D for her convenience, please?
Okay, we'll move to item C, which is Tiverton Housing, and we have one five-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-sixteen. We have a request for reappointment, and we have two requests for new appointments. And we have Jeanne Mae Durfee?
Yes.
I might note that for the reappointment of Ms. Crawford, the new appointment of Louise Muzaka, they have previously been interviewed.
Help me understand, are we choosing one of the three?
Yes. Well, you know, yes.
You said it?
Yes. Traditionally, I always ask the question to have you explain why you're interested in the position and why you think you're qualified, keeping in mind that the viewing public does not have the advantage that we do. They don't have your application in front of them. So it's good if you get a chance to give an introduction to yourself, your interest and your ability.
My name is Jeanne Mae Durfee. I've been a resident in the town for forty-nine years. My mother, Margaret Durfee, was the previous executive director for the Tiverton Housing Authority, and part of my interest is that I grew up hearing about different things in housing, and it was interesting to me. I'm a nurse, I've been a nurse for thirty years, and in my positions as a registered nurse, I have taken care of people from birth to death. So I've really covered the gamut. But my love is the elderly or older people. What I wanted to do is somehow get involved in the town, and the suggestion was made that perhaps this might be a good fit for me, because I am a nurse, I understand the needs of people who are older. Sometimes when they're living on their own, they have issues that can come up that they might not even recognize, and that being involved in social services in the community in this area and in other areas, that I might be able to assist in some way. I'm also licensed nursing home administrator in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, although I have not worked in any long length of time doing that, mostly six-month stints. But I have an understanding of housing issues, going in front of boards, working with administrative agencies, developing policies and procedures, developing programs, whether it's for elderly or, when I worked in the hospital, for that age group in the hospital, for what unit that I managed while I was there. I have budgeting experience, I have a master's degree in healthcare financing. I'm also currently involved in UMass Dartmouth in the Nurse Practitioner Program. So at some point, I'll be really, I will be out there with the elderly even more, but I thought this might be a way for me to get involved in the town of Tiverton, give back to my community, and also help the people of my community.
Any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Durfee, it's nice meeting you. How do you want to proceed? Do you want to proceed with the voting relating to Tiverton Housing at this point? Since Ms. Shabett will be recusing herself from items B and D, we'll go to C. Now, this gives you some idea of the difficulty we have with some of these boards and commissions. We have one term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-sixteen, and we have three excellent applicants. I hope nobody ever takes this personal, but if we don't, you know, you don't make it onto a board. Believe me, I've never yet met anybody who's come before us who really wasn't qualified to be on one of those boards or commissions. But the reality is, we have three applications, we only have one spot.
You know, if it takes any of the pressure off, I was just reading through Ms., I'm going to pronounce this wrong, but Muzaka? This application, and she makes a note at the bottom of her application saying that she'd be interested in the position with the Housing Authority unless there was another vacancy that she could be helpful on. So, on a board that she could be helpful to. So, you know, we at least have one person who is at least willing to serve on another board if there is a vacancy that appropriately meets.
Well, at this.
To Mr. Pelletier's point, how many other vacancies are we looking at right now?
Two open on the conservation, one on economic development, the harbor commission, but it's a certain criteria for it.
Just one on the harbor?
There's two, but there's certain criteria. One has to come from planning board. There's three on the recycling landfill recycling.
That's a popular group.
How many on tree?
One.
And one on EDC.
I'm curious, just to sort of get the conversation rolling, is there any thoughts? I mean, whenever you reappoint somebody that's already been with us, there's a lot of institutional knowledge and memory there and efficiency, but then again, it's always nice to have sort of a continuum of experience so that new ideas and fresh voices come to the table and that the knowledge is spread out. Can I maybe put Mr. Leonard on the spot for his thoughts on what you've seen in the past?
Most of the time, if people express an interest in being reappointed, they usually are unless there's some reason that negates that.
I will say this, though, there is at least some amount of sentiment that folks sometimes are, you know, they don't approach us or they don't request an appointment to a commission because they believe that they, just there's no vacancy, they'll never get on, because we tend to have a lot of long-term service. So there's at least that. I know that that's certainly a concern of some other folks who would otherwise potentially be interested in these positions.
Maybe at some time, not tonight, but at some point, we might actually consider putting some term limits. I mean, after somebody's been on a board for ten or fifteen years, maybe it's time to say, well, thank you, but we really do need new blood, as Mr. Coulter points out. I don't know. Might seem arbitrary to set a date, a time, a time period like that, but it's true. I mean, we do have a lot of new people applying, and they have excellent backgrounds. We make excellent candidate, they make excellent candidates, and yet we have the reappointments as well. Well, starting with C, we have to make the hard decision.
I have a motion?
Yep.
For C?
Okay.
When I look at the three applications that I have in front of me, if I'm making a decision based on experience, education, knowledge, I would like to make a motion to nominate Jeanne Mae Durfee.
To appoint.
Appoint, make a motion to appoint Jeanne Mae Durfee for this opening in housing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Ms. Durfee, welcome to Tiverton Housing.
May I ask, before we proceed, is there, I don't know, protocol here that we might extend a thank-you letter for applications? And then also, at that point, explain that here are the rosters of other pending? At least for now, I know we're working on getting this a little more firm in policy, but would there be any objection to extending that type of response?
I certainly would support sending a letter of appreciation to Ms. Crawford for her years of service on the board. It has been diligent and exemplary, and we certainly want to thank her for her efforts.
And I would add to that to encourage her, encourage both of these applicants to apply for other openings.
Okay, item one D, which is the Personnel Board, we have one four-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-fifteen. We have a reappointment request by Deborah DuPont, and a new appointment request by Leslie, I'll get this wrong, Poldibart. And both have been interviewed.
In this case, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Ms. DuPont.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second. I'm just looking for the paperwork, can we?
While Mr. Nelson looks for that, I would just point out that Ms. Poldibart has also applied for the juvenile hearing board. So that's just a data point to keep in mind here.
We had a motion for Ms. DuPont, we have a second. All those in favor of the reappointment? Anyone opposed? Item number D, item D, D, one D, juvenile hearing board. The available positions are two three-year terms and two one-year alternate terms. Altogether, four appointments. We have three requests for reappointment, three new requests for appointment. Of the new requests, we've previously interviewed Leslie Poldibart. We have not interviewed Brian Cabral or Jennifer Eng. Well, and the reappointments. I don't think typically we've requested the reappointments, though, to come back.
But I think, yeah.
Well, that's true, yeah.
I thought Ms. Costa was here last time around. My memory may be playing tricks on me, but I thought she was.
I don't, my notes don't have.
Okay, well, altogether, we have six candidates, and we have four terms.
And what is the full?
Four appointments.
What is the full size, the full complement of the hearing board, is it? I apologize for not knowing that. There must be at least two alternates.
Four, four and two alternates.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the issues with the Juvenile Hearing Board is that this is a relatively new board, I don't think any of these people had a full term that are seeking reappointment, did they? I mean, how long is the juvenile-
Ms. Costa, she was one of the original-
She did, one of the originals? Okay.
Well, we've got some of the people here who are either applying or reapplying for reappointment, maybe we could, in the interim, have them come up and give us a couple of words.
Do we have any of those seeking reappointment, Ms. Costa, Brown, or Mr. Repose?
Ms. Brown, Mr. Repose.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Brown.
And good evening to both of you, and I'll ask my question, since the public doesn't have the benefit of the paperwork that we do, I had to ask each of you, we'll go in alphabetical order, with Ms. Brown first, Mr. Costa second, to explain why you're interested and why you think you'd be good candidates.
Well, you know, my reason for wanting to be reappointed to the board is basically the same reason as for wanting to be appointed to it a while ago. I'm a third-generation Rhode Islander, I've been living in Tiverton almost all my life, I've raised my children here, I'm a property owner, I'm a business owner, and quite frankly, and by trade, I'm a criminal defense attorney in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, although I don't operate a real active business in Rhode Island. One of the things I see is that a lot of the crimes committed by my adult clients started out when they were juveniles, and I know that Tiverton struggles with finding things for their juveniles to engage in, not all of them can engage in sports, not all of them have the opportunities of coming from families that can afford to engage them in extracurricular activities, and the young people that we see are just that, young people that made some poor decisions. Instead of being one of those town citizens that complains endlessly about the children getting into trouble, or doing the wrong thing, or quitting school, or whatever it is they're engaging in, I don't want to complain about it. So, my initial reason for wanting the appointment was to do something about it, and the Juvenile Hearing Board was a new board to the town, mirrored after some other boards in other communities in Rhode Island, and I'd like to think that we really have made an impact on maybe a handful of the young people that have come before us. I think that was the mission of the board when it was created, I think we work well with the Tiverton Police Department, we have a nice relationship with them, and I think we've done a great job with a handful of young adults, and I want to continue that work. I work with a great bunch of other board appointees, it takes a certain chemistry to be able to deal with them, the format, we've come up with a format that works, I think when we've run into issues, we've managed as a board to discuss those issues and fix them, I think that we've done a great job, and I'd like to stay on the board to continue doing that. Actually, it's one of the more interesting aspects of my life, is that we meet on a Tuesday night, we've had board meetings where it's lasted an hour, and we've had some nights where we were there for four or five, and we've met a great cross-section of Tiverton residents, some of our offenders are from out of town, and I just want to continue that work.
Thank you, and I think I owe Mr. Repose an apology because I called him by the wrong name. I got the-
Basically, myself, I feel the same, but Renee, I mean, it's a group of actually, there was concern, it's five permanent, well, sit on three years or two years of terms and then two alternates, and myself, I've been sitting on the board for two years as an alternate, and I feel that, I mean, the impact that we've put together, working together as a group for these kids, I mean, some of them, I mean, and put them in the right direction, you know, and get them out of the court system, and helping them, you know, and the families and all, and I'd like to continue working on with this board again for another year or two years or three years and the rest of my life. I don't want to keep it short, I'm not like that, I'm not a jury.
Good point.
Well, let me speak for you just briefly, you're a retired firefighter, you've been active in the Lions Club, you're president, have been, either are or have been a president of the Tiverton High School Athletic Boosters, and you're currently a board member.
Yeah, we're a 30-year firefighter in town of Tiverton, and I am presently the president of the Tiverton Lions Club now. Like, again, Tiverton, past president for two years of the boosters, of the high school, big fundraising with the athletic departments up there, you know, like the circuses that came into town accountable, that from the high school, I ran that for them, you know, so getting involved with youth.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, you said you serve currently on the alternate panel?
Correct.
And Ms. Brown, can I ask you, are you on the alternate panel or on the primary panel?
I'm on the primary board.
Okay, thank you. And I should apologize too, I'm an attorney, so I wasn't making fun of you for talking.
Are there any other questions? I was going to suggest this process, that is, we start out with the two three-year terms.
Is there any other candidates here?
I would like to know.
Yeah, do we have, oh, do we have any other candidates?
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much.
I'm glad you two are alert. Thank you very much for joining us.
When I came last time, I spoke to you, but I brought a copy of my resume. This is Brian, away on vacation, he's just, oh, I'm sorry, he's here.
Here we go. Where'd he go? Can he sit up there? I would, I would ask you, Ms. Eng, to give a brief statement about why you're interested and what your background is, again, keeping in mind, other people don't have the benefit of having your paperwork.
Okay, I am a registered nurse, I have a background in teaching, I'm concerned with kids making good decisions for themselves, and I don't think that they always get those tools at home, so unfortunately, it falls on other people to guide them and show them what they need to do to be successful people. Health and safety are important, and I think with a background in teaching and as a nurse, I think those are some things I kind of have a handle on. I'm a parent, I have a nine-year-old, he's a very good boy, and I'd really like to start somewhere to do some public service, to get involved in town government, and it seems like a likely spot.
Okay, thank you. And I would ask the same, that you give a thumbnail.
Sure. Okay, my name is Isabel Ryan Cabral, I've been in public education now for 18 years, I have an undergraduate degree in English and master's degrees in counseling and school administration. I've been employed with the Providence School Department now for, going on eight years in there, working with inner-city youth. My job is to counsel students who are at risk in the school program, and to help ramp them up in all of the subject areas, as well as attract them and their success as they move through the schools. Currently, I'm working in middle schools, in a middle school, but I've also worked in the high schools as well. I've been a town resident and property owner, I've lived here all my life, and I will continue to. I've never worked in, or been involved in any kind of government because I didn't want to be involved in any politics, but by being involved in a board such as the Juvenile Hearing Board, gives me the opportunity to benefit my town and to use the skills for which I went to school.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else as far as the reappointments or the new applicants under Juvenile Hearing Board?
Mrs. Costa is one that has not been interviewed, and she has informed us that she was on vacation, so she shouldn't be able to come in.
Okay. Well, consistent with our practice, I'd suggest then we would continue the matter until we have the opportunity to interview all the candidates.
I would so move.
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Consider mine second, Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Okay, so we've continued Item D relating to the Juvenile Hearing Board to our next meeting.
With the modified- I would just like to make a remark that, and I know I'm repeating myself, these are very highly skilled and educated people, and we are doing ourselves a disservice if we do not select these folks for this board, we're doing ourselves a disservice if we can't somehow encourage them to serve in some other capacity.
I'd echo the same remarks, we do have boards and commissions.
We can't choose everybody.
We do have vacancies, yeah, in this particular case, we have four vacancies, and we have six applicants, all very good applicants, but what do we do? So, we, well, we will continue Item 1D, and-
So, we continue Item 1D on the stipulation that we interview Cynthia Costa at the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, under unfinished business, Counselor Coulter?
This is a matter that's been continued many times, and as it is, I have a request from Mr. Odell to continue once again, who has an illness in his immediate family and can't be present. However, I am happy to begin this conversation tonight, to the extent that it's the council's pleasure, and I'm certainly interested in allowing any of the people that have requested the action from the council to have their time to come up and explain their position. Thank you.
Okay, that would be my first request, too, if there is going to be any discussion, then we're going with the discussion. This relates to a piece of correspondence which is attached as Attachment E. Is there anyone that wanted to speak on this subject, anyone who signed the letter? Would they want an opportunity tonight to speak on the letter? Mr. Coulter? If I can just add one comment, I think I made this the last time, I've reviewed the correspondence, and in a different fashion, it's also been sent as a letter to the editor. It does request, the letter is quite specific in the letter to the editor, requesting that the town council take action. I'm not aware of any authority at all that would allow a town council, that would allow a town council to vote one way or the other, to have one of its members, an elected official, recuse themselves. So, I think I'm starting off with the concern that if this issue is really being directed to the town council, we have absolutely no authority that I'm aware of. With that said, Mr. Coulter, if you have some brief comments, and Mr. Nelson, since both of you are identified in the correspondence.
Well, there's really two issues here, as I understand it, one is a request that any discussion relating to the pending taxpayer lawsuit be held in the open, and I happen to agree with that, and I'll come back to that. The second part of this letter is a request that Mr. Nelson and myself recuse, and I am quite frankly perplexed since we had a unanimous ruling of the Ethics Commission, which has already determined, determined that there's simply no merit to that, so I'm still waiting to hear from anybody on what authority, other than, unless this is just a political game of some sort. So, I won't belabor the moment now, I know Mr. Odell wants to speak to it, but my question, I guess, to my fellow colleagues, is if there's anything in that second part of this that they want to talk about here, because it's wholly without merit, and unless somebody's here to press it, that I don't want to waste our time when it's already been considered unanimously by the Ethics Commission.
And Mr. Nelson?
Well, I have similar remarks, I'm disappointed that the signers of this letter aren't here to defend themselves. I, too, see this in two separate points, the first being that this conversation's about the Odell case be handled out in the open. I've made those statements multiple times, and I continue to feel that way and repeat that again tonight, that we should have as much of this conversation out in the open as we possibly can. But you know what, that's Dave Nelson speaking, I realize that that's a decision for the council to make, and I would encourage the council to consider that carefully, to have as much of this conversation out in the open, in my mind, that benefits the community to a very large degree. Second, this letter is just, it's fraught with political intent, and from my view, misstatement. I was hoping that this evening, someone would come forward so we could clarify some of these statements that are being made here, since that doesn't seem to be the case, it's my preference not to belabor the issue this evening, and if we would like to continue this in order for Mr. Odell and his wife to speak to it, then I support that as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I would just follow up, that that is a courtesy that we've extended to Mr. Jenkins as well, that this has been on the agenda now for two or three times, so, but I will tell you now that once Mr. Odell has his opportunity to speak, that I will echo Mr. Nelson's remarks, in that in my opinion, on this case, and on any case that is of essential policy importance, such as the school committee case, the issues with our treasurer, that all of these matters should be held in the open session, there's no prejudice to the town otherwise. I guess I should, in fairness to the council, ask that, to anyone's knowledge, has litigation ever been discussed in the open? I know our town solicitor would, and our new solicitor just told us not to talk about it in the open as well, so I don't want to beat up on my colleagues, so I, we're not doing anything that's inconsistent with past practice, correct?
Mr. President, I'll comment on both points, no, we are not doing anything inconsistent with past practice. I've worked with three different solicitors, well, the third one would be Mr. Olivera, and they have all been consistent, whenever you're talking about strategy, tactics, and legal issues, they've all recommended that that be done in executive session, so we're not doing anything untoward. And in line with the fact that we did extend the courtesy to Mr. Jenkins, for him to be here tonight, I would make a motion that we continue this item till the next meeting, so Mr. Odell can be here if he so chooses.
Second?
I just want to say one quick thing, something you said, Mr. Nelson, that we all should consider, you know, as much as we possibly can, bringing this into the open, and I'll just state for the record that I believe that we have addressed as much as I'm comfortable addressing in open session regarding this case, and that I will agree with, you know, what our solicitors have said, and what Cecil just said, that there are certain elements of this case that really do belong in- said, that there are certain elements of this case that really do belong in, in executive session. And I think, for the most part, I've been comfortable with the amount of, amount we talk about in executive session versus open session. So I heed your suggestion and I don't know how we work towards opening that lineup, but we do, we'll try.
Yeah, I'm just going to add my own comment, my own sentiment. This letter has been continued indefinitely. I would agree with Mr. Coulter and Mr. Nelson, as I understand what they're saying in this, and that quite simply is, this letter is sheer nonsense. And that's the reason I'm going to oppose the request to continue it. I'm going to vote against the continuance. I don't see a reason to continue this silliness any further. I understand your personal involvement. I understand Mr. Odell wanted to speak. But I mean, at some point, I, I think it's just time to say, let's set this silliness aside, let's move on, then that's it, period. So we have a motion to continue it to our next meeting. We have a second.
Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. It would be Mr. Jenkins that was mentioned here tonight. You do remember he had requested it on the 25th and I did not put that on the agenda. He did come into the clerk's office and state that he was going out to Montana and would not be here this evening. Initially, he knew that he didn't say that. I have not heard from others, but he did come in. He was away last meeting in this, so I just wanted it to be known.
Well, we presently have a motion to continue this matter. A second?
Will you take a comment from the public or?
Mr. Karen?
Just for the benefit of the public, could someone please read the signatories to this letter with the names, just the list of names?
William Jenkins, Laura Epke, Louise Durfee, Joanne Aruda, James Aruda, Carol Herman, Deborah Palish, Brian Mediris.
I heard a statement earlier that nobody was here who signed the letter and I believe that there is a gentleman here who signed the letter. So I just want to correct the false statement that somebody is here who may want to speak on it.
Well, I characterize it as an incorrect statement, but the question is whether anybody wants to speak on this letter. Apparently, no one does. We now have a motion to continue the matter. A second? All those in favor? Those opposed?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Under financial business, Town Administrator, Mr. Goncalo?
You have before you a, a budget for FY-12 for the wastewater management, which I am recommending with one notation that the council should be aware of, the fact that we are increasing the number of hours worked for the clerical health. The commission wishes to expand her duties to attend meetings and prepare minutes as well as do some follow-up work on collections. So I would recommend that this budget be adopted and ask the council to approve.
Mr. President, I have two questions. How many hours will the building clerk now be working and does that number of hours make her eligible for benefits?
No, she currently works 10 hours per week and this will bring her up to somewhere between 15 and 16.
Mr. Goncalo, just for the benefit of everyone here, can you just explain how this budget relates with our overall, separate from the FTM package and?
Right, this is, this is a separate budget from the Financial Town Meeting. It is a budget solely dependent on its revenue. It is the wastewater commission budget. They tax or they bill the users of the services and the revenue, we also pay, the biggest, the biggest share of the budget is the fees, the sewer fees that go to the city of Fall River. And it allows, the collections allow us to operate the wastewater commission and pay the fees to the city of Fall River.
Which, that leads me to my second question, that last year, we, we had a budget of $338,985 to go to Fall River and this year, that dropped to $271,740. Are we projecting less volume?
No, Fall River lowered its rate to us.
That's rather amazing.
It is. There was a substantial increase the year before, though.
Oh, okay.
That was amazing also.
That was my recollection, okay.
That wasn't a kind gesture for dumping 900,000 gallons of sewer into our bed.
So this is a 400, almost half a million dollar budget that is completely separate and apart from the regular FTM process? The FTM electors have never seen this?
Correct.
I thought the onsite numbers were from the, from the budget, fiscal year 12.
Yeah, actually, when I speak, yeah, the onsite portion of the budget is the, the part that's funded by the, by the town. The rest of the balance is funded by user fees.
Okay. And I, I thought the amount appropriated at the Financial Town Meeting was $16,090.
That is correct. The rest of the budget is financed through user fees.
Okay, you have $16,590.
The, whatever was, whatever was appropriated at the Financial Town Meeting-
Is, is what it should be?
Will, will be what they receive.
Did you just want to throw your name and title on the record, please?
Oh, Leroy Kendrick, Chairman, Wastewater Management, 53 Rodeo Denderin Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
Mr. President, I would move that we adopt this budget as presented with the, with the small type of correction as noted by Ms. Chavitt.
Second? All those in favor?
I would also, just really quickly, Mr. President, I would like to note that Mr. Kendrick is a volunteer. He does not get paid from any of the funds in this budget. He volunteers all of his time and expertise with no charge to the town. And frankly, we're very lucky to have his expertise.
You're here. I think we all agree. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Under new business, Town Administrator?
I would like to request permission from the council to advertise for a seasonal assistant to the maintenance foreman. We currently have a seasonal helper, but unfortunately, it's, it's very sad to say that he's out ill and it does not appear as though he will be returning. And this is, this is the time of the year where we need most assistance. So he's been out now for a couple of months on and off, but we haven't seen him now for, for three or four weeks. And we will miss him dearly if anything happens, but we do need help.
Essentially, then, these would be the same hours and the same pay rate as previously?
Yes.
I might note also, as you put in the memo, that there are no benefits. This is a part-time job. There are no benefits such as health, dental, life insurance?
Correct.
And the, the money for this position was budgeted?
Yes, it was.
And approved by the Financial Town Meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a?
So, just a question, so the process, we, we advertise, the personnel board interviews, makes a selection, then you pick from that? How does, how does that work?
It's the same process, yes.
Is that it? Okay, thank you.
I'd make a motion that we approve Mr. Goncalo's request to advertise for a seasonal maintenance assistant.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Under new business, item number two, this is a proposal I've made for an advisory committee for Nantiquacat Pond. I'll briefly read from the resolution that Andy Tights put together after I discussed it with him. The purpose reads as follows. "The purpose of the committee shall be to advise the town council as to the condition of the pond and provide such recommendations as the committee deems are reasonable and appropriate to preserve the ecological and recreational quality of the waterway." End of quote. Quite simply, the reason I, I'm suggesting this and raising this for the town council is that I was concerned when the whole issue of the oysters came up. And you'll recall at the hearings that we had, there were a number of claims that this pond has issues, that this pond is polluted, that this pond is becoming polluted. That really wasn't the central issue. The cent, the issue was whether or not we were going to have co-hogs, I'm not co-hogs, oysters. Since then, I've had a number of people tell me that we should have followed up on that, that whole issue of the condition of the pond. And as you know from the local newspapers, reading the letters to the editor of the Sconnet Times and to the Newport Daily News, if my count is correct, we've now had over the last three or four months, about, I think it's eight letters to the editor, raising this whole issue as to the condition of that pond. All arms, I'll tell you quite bluntly, I have absolutely no idea at all what the condition of the pond is, none whatsoever. And the question, I think, really for the town council tonight is whether, with the number of questions that have been raised, whether there's, the responsible position at this point may be to at least have a committee look into it and give us some advice as to the condition of that pond so that we are in fact preserving the ecological and recreational quality of that, of that waterway. I have no dog in the fight, but I think with the amount of concern that we've seen raised by our number of citizens over the last few months, it's at least something that we should consider as a town council as to whether we want to go further.
I think that, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Nelson?
As I'm looking at the purpose, what occurs to me is that really what we're after is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is really two questions. Is there pollution in that pond and where is it coming from? Now, if those are the-
I have no idea.
If those are the questions, you know, is there pollution, then there, I'm sure is some sort of methodology, some discovery that we would go through that involves some degree of science. It's not clear to me that a committee would have the ability to tell us that pond is polluted and this is where it's coming from. To me, I mean, in my mind, that would be a purpose that might be unstated here. And I offer those thoughts to, to the council for conversation.
If I can just interject at this point, yeah, I'm not even suggesting that it's polluted. I'm not even sure that that's the issue. I can say that people have said, "The pond has problems, the pond has issues, there are questions, we need some answers." I don't even know if you really get to the issue of polluted at this point.
Well, I mean, I should have stated it better. Because it might not be polluted and it might be perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Now, what criteria do we use in order for us to make that determination? The committee has to have the ability to do that, the technical ability, is my point.
You know, I understand what you're saying. I, I think that, that would be for the, for the committee itself to determine how far it's going, based on whatever expertise it brings and whatever findings they make in their, in whatever work they're doing, interviewing people, checking, checking records, checking with agencies. My only point at this, right now, is Nantiquacat is obviously a valuable possession of the town of Tiverton.
Agreed.
I don't think I'm overstating it. I don't mean to knock anybody at this point, but I think the total knowledge of this town council as to the condition of Nantiquacat could probably be put in a thumbnail. The only question I have is, since a number of people have raised this issue, a number of people have thought enough of the issue to sit down and write a letter to the Newport Daily or to the Sconnet Times, and a number of people raised the issue at those hearings, maybe it's at least something we have a responsibility to look into. That's about all I can say in, in support of the resolution.
Mr. President, if, if we do decide to go ahead with this, and I, I share many of Mr. Nelson's concerns, I think that we should have a representative from the Wastewater Management Committee on it. The only indication I have about the level of pollution of Nantiquacat Pond is that when the Wastewater Management Commission laid out the schedule to have septic systems and cesspools inspected over the years, Nantiquacat area was given a higher priority than some other areas. So circumstantially, there appears to be at least some evidence that there, there may be a concern about pollution. And then the other point I would make is, I would like to consult with our Town Administrator whether he agrees to allow us to take a person that reports to him and unilaterally usurp work that he might have or take time that the administrator may have other work for the town planner to do. And I know I just put him on the spot because Mr. Goncalo is a very intelligent fellow and I doubt he's going to tell his collective bosses, "No, no, you can't do that."
Actually, I'm not going to say that. Actually, I think it's a very good idea, okay, because they do have some expertise and they, they can lend, I would think, a lot to this type of commission. And I think it's an excellent idea and certainly asks for a volunteer from Wastewater Management to also serve on this committee if this committee comes to pass.
You'll note as well, what I tried to do is to make sure that the involvement was really the involvement of the, of our citizens. I suggested here, this, whatever the language, Mr. Tights put the legalese into the language, but I suggested having nine members on this committee. But I wanted at least six of the members to be from the public, sort of limiting the expertise, if you will, at least initially. And I did identify the town, this is for the benefit of people who don't have this in front of them. I did identify the town planner, the harbor master or a designee of Harbor and Coastal Waters Commission, and the chair or designee of the Conservation Commission. There's no, there's nothing magic about the proposed appointments. I just thought that this should have a substantial component of citizen involvement. Nantiquacat really belongs to the whole town. I'm sure that there are those who live in that area that have a particular concern and which, if we do decide to go with a committee, we'd certainly like to have the input from those people. But by having six people, I would certainly hope we get the voice of the citizens.
My, my question is a little bit more abstract and tangential, but I, I very much appreciate this, this resolution and this idea. My question is, I know there was discussion when we were talking about the, the use of the pond, how much of, how much of the pond or how much of the jurisdiction is ours and how much is the state of Rhode Island? So I'm wondering that, you know, after this group does, you know, starts to make some conclusions and make some- conclusions and make some recommendations, how much are we able to, and maybe this is a question for Jeannie, how much are we able to act on these things? Or, you know, what are the steps? How much authority do we have over a state body of water? I know it sits in our backyard, but it also has that layer of CRMC control and...
I think what you're doing is you're trying to come up with a body from the town that would be able to identify issues, and from there you can then contact the appropriate...
Escalate them to the state level.
You know, state body or group. But at least you'd start with, you know, a focal group here from the town made up of, you know, a diverse group that would at least start that engagement.
So is there, and this is a question for anybody who knows the answer, is there someone at the state level in any of these various organizations that we might reach out to as, you know, informal liaison or something like that? Who would be the person we would want to put on notice of our actions? This is sort of...
Wouldn't the committee do that?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't the committee do that? I think that once you form the committee, then they would identify what resources they might need and reach out appropriately.
There would be two state agencies that would come immediately to mind. One is DEM, Department of Environmental Management, and the other, of course, is Coastal Resource. Although frankly, based on past practice of coastal resource, they don't much care what the town of Tiverton's governing body thinks, nor for that matter, just about any other town's governing body. But that's, past practice may not indicate future behavior, so I shouldn't do that.
Just one comment. I believe we do have a designated representative to the Coastal Waters Resource Management Commission. I believe it's Carol Herman.
Ms. May?
My name is Jackie May. I'm the director of the Nantiquacat Neighborhood Association. I've attended two harbor commission meetings ago where they're drafting the aquaculture policy that sort of, it does intersect with what we're talking about right now, and we did talk about water quality. And I believe Richard Hart, he wasn't at the meeting I was at, but perhaps he was there last night, wanting to talk about water quality in Nantiquacat Pond. Since I went to the meeting of the harbor commission on July 18th with their initial draft of this aquaculture policy, I took it upon myself to just see what sort of information is out there with DEM and most notably Riptes, which is the Rhode Island Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which deals with the Tiverton High School runoff that there's rumors flying around about the runoff in the high school from Sin and Flesh Brook, from, there's a few streams that run into Nantiquacat Pond. And there seems to be a commission or four, at least four programs with DEM that address these four topics, such as the DEM shellfish program monitors bacterial levels so that the shellfish can be harvested or that it's open for shellfishing, which meets stringent regulations by DEM. And then underneath the stringent guidelines for shellfishing comes swimming. So if it's approved for shellfishing, it's approved for swimming. Then there's the DEM Surface Water Protection Division that monitors the overall water quality data of the pond on a regular basis. I've spoken to all of these people, just as a citizen. There is a URI watershed watch that coordinates volunteer water quality monitoring. They do that six times a year. You know, they've got this pretty well covered. This information is available by a phone call or an email. I don't really think that, you know, this whole rigor mole of having another committee with nine people and more time-consuming arguments, that this data is the same for anybody that asks for it. There's no, it's DEM and URI. And they're more than willing to provide the data to, maybe as a formal request from the council, or maybe from Ms. Herman, or maybe from the harbor master, or the harbor commission, or there's a slew of people that could ask for this information, as I did. I am with the neighborhood association that has been involved with Nantiquacat Pond for at least a year and a half, if not more, most notably for our opposition towards aquaculture and oyster farming, the way it was presented with the last application that was withdrawn in May. That's my comment on trying to find this information about water quality in Nantiquacat Pond, that it is available.
If I may, I gather, even though you didn't so state, that when you inquired, none of those agencies felt the pond was polluted?
I think they used the word pristine.
Thank you.
Ms. May, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Good evening, and thank you for your remarks. One of the concerns that I have with the proposal as drafted is that it doesn't seem to explicitly put a seat at the table. I know that you don't speak for every single resident that affronts the pond, but to my knowledge, you speak for about 80% of them or better. So has your organization expressed an opinion on this proposal? Or you're not required to answer that, of course.
The proposal for the commission?
For this commission? And if so, what type of, it seems to me that you or your delegate would need to have a seat at that table. Nobody else in the town probably knows. I mean, I've seen your work on this, probably knows the issues as well as you.
I was just sort of trying to simplify the process, that instead of having another layer, we're all going to get to the same table sooner or later with CRMC, a subcommittee hearing, the council. I mean, we've been through this quite a few times, that why would a commission actually help this? I'm a little torn of, because people were asking me, well, you know, go on, try to be on the committee. And I was like, I sort of feel like I am on a committee and that I'm doing the legwork and that there is information to be found and there's a process to be followed. And I believe that we've been following that.
Yeah, maybe that's the first question, and that is...
I mean, is it necessary?
Whether, well, actually, if, you know, looking at the resolution, my thought was the real primary purpose of any committee, at least initially, would just be to gather some information and provide some information to the town council so we have some idea as to what the situation is, what the condition is. You've read the letters, I'm sure, that have been written to the editors. I don't think this means anything, but I just point out, I actually haven't seen anybody writing a rebuttal to any of those letters. But that doesn't mean anything. I guess you're, are you telling us that there really is no reason at all for this town council to have any concern at all about the condition of Nantiquacat Pond?
I mean, I think that if there's a future application, which there's been rumors of a proposition, sort of formulating at the harbor commission at this time, that sooner or later, they would have to prove, they're saying that there's pollution, we need oysters. Go ahead and get your information. Have some information.
I'm not saying that. I guess my point isn't clear. I haven't said anything in the resolution to indicate the place is polluted. I'll give you a typical example. This is something that got me started on this. Of course, we all went to those hearings, and you know that the claim was made it was polluted or was getting polluted or whatever. I'm sure you've heard people say that in town. I've actually had now three people who've called me at different times over the last few months and have said, "If you want, I can bring you. I'll show you where the pipes are that are putting the trash into that pond." I haven't taken up anybody's offer yet. I think about two months ago, I think I decided, yeah, I think maybe I should do something when I saw this mountain of suds floating on the pond following me as I was going over Nantiquacat Bridge. I don't think a normal pond has a mountain of soap suds. And I'm not, I will be the first to admit I am totally ignorant of what the condition is at Nantiquacat Pond, totally ignorant. My question is, should the town council be ignorant? I mean, is there anything at all that we should be concerned about, any worry at all? I mean, even just for informational purposes?
I'd be happy to re-contact these four individuals that run these programs at DEM and URI and ask the same questions and CC the council.
Can I just ask?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. What, just to be devil's advocate, we have a conservation committee, we have a wastewater management commission, and we also have a harbor management. So we have three committees, all reporting through our town administrator. And I mean, I'm usually the first person to say, "Committee's great. I love having as many people in the process." But what, and I'm not being sarcastic, what do you envision this committee accomplishing that the synergy of those other three committees have not or could not, or, you know, if Ms. May can get...
If nothing else, maybe focusing on one issue, getting the information on this one issue, and making sure this town council's properly informed as to whether or not we should or should not be doing something.
Well, it sounds like from Ms. May's investigation that there are several state agencies that already have acquired the information, and all we need to do is make a formal request. And if I heard her right, she even just volunteered to make the request on our behalf.
I'd be happy to draft a letter for the council to review, to submit to these four agencies and see what happens.
That's a great first start, that first step.
Great. Thank you.
Believe me, as I said earlier on another issue, I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't live on Nantiquacat Pond. Mrs. Black?
Yes. Good evening to the council. I just want everyone to know in the community that the schools have been working very closely with DEM on all these issues, and we've never heard any reports of Nantiquacat Pond. But we have had to certify one of our staff to test the waters. You had to go to school and get certification, and that's the level it came to. It wasn't just like, "We'll check it every day." This person had to go to school and pass all the tests, and we have him on board now. But we're working very closely with DEM, and those reports will be out. It'll be on the next school committee meeting, okay? Just so you know. Thank you.
Well, I'm still going to hold Mrs. May to her promise to get us all of this information. Mr. Bellucci?
Thank you.
One minute, please. Just a point of clarification. When Mrs. Black says they have a person certified, she's talking about a school department employee that monitors the onsite waste treatment plant that they have, that the high school has, and also includes the new elementary school? Am I right?
And to follow up on that, some of the discharge from that sewage treatment does end up in Nantiquacat Pond, and the department has been cited for some lack of compliance. So that's obviously a major piece of data that would have to be resolved before, or if this committee were to consider something, the first thing I would think they would take a look at is that.
Which DEM should be able to give...
Just one other comment, as to add another fourth body of regulation. Under our DEM, the town's DEM stormwater license, the DPW regularly has a consultant test outfalls that go contribute to any water body. So any outfall from a catch basin that runs through a pipe and then dumps into Nantiquacat is tested regularly. And if we, and we have to turn those test results into DEM every year. So we have some control as far as stormwater goes, as far as identifying any pollutants. And we have had, we haven't failed any of the compliance tests yet with that stormwater discharge.
Mr. Cox?
Good evening. I'm Bruce Cox. I'm actually chairman of the town harbor commission, harbor and water commission. It is actually on our agenda, the issue of Nantiquacat Pond and the water quality, the question of it. We're not making a position one way or the other regarding it. One comment made by Ms. May is that we are, in fact, reviewing a process and a policy relative to aquaculture, having nothing specifically to do with Nantiquacat Pond. Obviously, the application that was there brought it to the forefront, and we are now working on the policy of what an aquaculturalist has to do, and then a procedure by which they'll have to give notice to the butters and such, because in the last application, the town was woefully ill-prepared for that because those regulations didn't exist. Aquaculture is a comparatively new science. As it relates to the concept of the specific committee, it's my understanding, because by pure chance, on Friday, I happened to speak with Mr. Tights. My committee met, actually, on Thursday, I spoke with Mr. Tights. My committee met yesterday on VJ Day, Victory Day, excuse my error. And I wanted to confirm with them, we could, because it's technically a state holiday. And he said, certainly. He said, by the way, I am drafting this. And it's my understanding that that has a one-year sunset clause as well. So it's a specific focus committee for addressing the issue of the concept of what the quality or non-quality of water may or may not be in Nantiquacat Pond. Am I correct? In my understanding, that has a one-year sunset provision? Yes. Okay. And as such, it's not something that's going to develop a life unto itself, other than to answer several questions that I think remain unanswered. Obviously, Ms. May has contacted some of the agencies that have that. We've started fleshing out that, and I actually have a member of my committee that's willing to be on that, but, because one of the appointees would be from the commission. But my point is, I personally think it's probably a good idea because it's obviously been a point of tremendous conjecture. It's a valuable asset of the town. And candidly, we're busy enough with other things on our commission to not have to be addressing that, if those answers are delved into and answered by another commission, especially if it's a limited focus commission.
I like the term you used, Mr. Cox, conjecture. I have absolutely, as I repeat it again, I have no idea at all whether there are any issues.
That's the, where's the baseline?
But I think you at least have to raise the issue and discuss it publicly when you have people calling you, you have letters to the editor, you have people making public presentations. At least you have to address the issue. I think we're going to end up with Ms. May as our one-person committee to get us information. That'll be our first step.
Very possibly.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Mr. Karen?
Yeah, hi. I'm Jeff Karen, a resident on the Nantiquacat Road, and my immediate family owns three parcels budding the pond. And I'd just like to state, back off and state a little bit of the sensitivity of this topic. And many of you, some of you were in town, some of you weren't. It was probably 20 years ago when the pond classification switched from type two to type one waters. And in that time, a lot of rights were stripped away from riparian owners. And so that move back then, when it happened, 20 or whatever years ago it was, was highly political. There were members on the council and in the government in the town who were associated with that decision through connections to CRMC and whatnot. And so I'd like to stress that the pond suffered, the riparian owners of the pond suffered greatly about 20 years ago. Residents spent over $100,000 trying to maintain their property rights. And when I see a group like this come along potentially again, on one hand, I get excited, gee, maybe I'll get on it. On the other hand, I get really concerned because I've seen what can happen from political agendas related to the pond. It's already happened to the people once, and I wouldn't want to see a group like this come out with a recommendation. And the proposal does say the word recommendation somewhere there as in the purpose. Come out with a recommendation and have that recommendation, yet strip more rights away from the riparian owners. Now, we can always say, well, we need to keep the pond clean and whatnot, but every single time we take a step toward pristine and perfect waters, we clamp down more on the owners of the property. So the sensitivity to this, while maybe I'm the only one who spoke on this aspect of it tonight, I just want to raise the awareness and the extreme sensitivity of this topic, especially for those of us who have been in town for a couple of decades, and remember what we went through when the classification was changed. With that, I thank you for hearing me.
Mr. Hart?
Richard Hart, Main Road, Tiverton. When this oyster question came up... When this oyster question came up, I was very interested in it, and many years ago, there used to be a lot of oysters in Nanakwaket Pond. You saw quahoggers in there, clambers, striped bass used to follow the bait in there. Over the years, the quahogs and so forth have deteriorated. There's not as many there now as there used to be. Why? I don't know, and I don't think anybody has too much of an idea. Why? Is it something about what's growing in there that we're not seeing? I looked a little more closely at some of the shorefront around the pond when this oyster thing came up, or after it came up, and in May, there was a flush of algae all over the edges of the pond. I looked there at the mouth of Sin and Flesh Brook. It was green, and I have pictures of that. Just north of Evelyn's, again, it was green and slippery, because there was so much algae. And then I looked down at Lawrence Court near the old boat ramp there, it fell to pieces. And there again, it was a lot of algae and plant growth there that subsequently died. And this is an indication of high nutrient levels going into the pond from somewhere. And I started looking around, and this, as you mentioned, there's a pipe there, 12-inch pipe, I think it is, just on the east side of the bridge, spruing out water that appears to have something that's causing bubbles and so forth. This might be somebody's got a, their laundry system hooked in that they're pumping out into one of the catch basins. It could be from other things. I spoke to Mr. the head of the wastewater there about the school. I'd heard at different times that there was nutrients they felt coming from the school. And I looked at the sewage treatment plant up there at the school, and they have the system there that was originally for the high school alone, and it's set up so that the sewage is chlorinated, and chopped up and filtered, and oxygen bubbled through it. And then it's put into a sand filter, which takes out all of the solids, but then all the liquids, with all the things that's dissolved in it, including the urine from the students and the staff up there, that just goes down through there. And then that's pumped up to the North Brighton Road, then goes to the stoplight, it goes down on the east side of Bugamash, and at opposite 626, I think it is, Bugamash, the pipe goes across, and there's an easement that takes it into the area between Holly Ridge and Fish Road. There's a swamp in there, and the pipe comes out, and it looks like a culvert, and it's about a 12-inch pipe, and the affluent, just the liquid comes out of that pipe. Now, I checked into the high school. Apparently, there's, is it just under 600 students and staff in the high school subsequently? The middle school has 650 students and staff, and now the new Ranger School has about 250 students, a total of over 1,500 individuals, 180 days a year. All of the urine from those people is going through that treatment plant, pumped down Bugamash, and then into this swamp, which then goes across into the trout pond and Sin and Flesh Brook. Now, that's a lot of nitrogen from just the urine of all of these people that's going out. The bacteria's chlorinated, there's probably little bacteria in that liquid that's coming out of it, that's taken care of. But the nutrients, they're not touched, they're just coming down that pipe, and then they're going into the pond. You also have a bunch of usually waterfowl there at the mouth of Sin and Flesh Brook. You have geese, and you have ducks, and each one of these geese, the Canadian geese, have been shown to, especially the young ones.
I don't know if there's much we can do about that.
But they're excreting roughly two pounds of manure in that, that's not urine, all the nitrogen and phosphates are right in the solid pot, that's just going into the water. Now, every, quite often, you see young children, they're feeding the geese, and they're just encouraging those geese to come there to get fed, and they're throwing bread in there, and that breaks down, of course, and gives you more nutrients in the pond. And the first step I would take is recommend that we at least put some signs up there, "Please don't feed the geese." The area next to Evelyn's.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What would you expect the town council to do with this information that you've just shared with us?
I think, I think at first, I've spoken to Lippincourt there.
Who?
The wastewater management person, and I tried to find out if he had a watershed estimate of what in the town flows in that direction. And I just touched the surface, I think. You spit out on this ground out here, throw a cigarette out this door, and it ends up in the gut down there, in the water, the tobacco. There's all of these little things, and they are all impacting.
Let me repeat my question, what should we do with this information that you've given us this evening?
I think we need to assemble it, and everybody be aware of it. It would help our planning board in new developments, all of these new developments up at Holly Ridge, Christopher Circle, you've got a lot of new houses up there, they're fertilizing their lawns. Maybe we could ask them to, you know, cut back on the fertilization, just to try, it's not one individual thing, it's a number of things that are impacting the nutrients in that pond, and producing high nutrient levels, which when the algae dies, then you get a reduced oxygen in the water, and things just can't live in there. It's a wonder we don't see fish kills there. The shellfish can't get away from it, and maybe this is the reason the shellfish is going downhill in the pond. If there's some way we can, we need to take those nutrients out of the water, get them out of there, both reduce what's going in there, and possibly, some way, figure out how to, Mother Nature flushes it out twice a day with the tide. The south end of the pond there is high sediments, it's very muddy. Down below Lawrence Court, the, we have winter cement in there that dumps in there since when I was growing up. You have the Podden Gray Farm there, and you have at least two trailer courts, Dodson's and Sanford's there, that we should be watching closely the septic systems and the handling of the sewage.
Dick, I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut you off, but I just wanna make a comment.
All of these things, I think, would help if we brought them all together and gave a report of all of these things within the watershed, then planning and new development in the area, we could try to handle any future and additional.
Right. What I see is, we have two distinct points that we need to somehow bridge the gap on. We have all the statistical data that says we're doing fine, and that things are pristine, and things are okay, and we're not failing in any area. We also have what, you know, Council Lambert's mentioned, we have a lot of this anecdotal information, observations, listening to Dick here. So somehow, there's, for me at least, there's enough concern that I, I think it's good we're talking about these issues, because, you know, it's one thing to listen to everybody that's at the state that says, "Don't worry about anything," but if you're seeing something else happening, I think it's important, at least, to investigate further. So I'm, I will repeat that I am supportive of this idea.
Mr. President, I think that the next logical step is to take Ms. May up on her offer, and we continue this issue until we have a chance to review her letter, which I suspect will be available to us at the next meeting, and then get the information from the different state agencies. We already have information in Mr. Belucci's possession, because he files the reports, and Mrs. Black also has access to school records. So I think if we get those items all together, we'll at least have a good first step. So I put that in the form of.
No, I agree, I think it's been a good conversation, at least we know that there may be an issue, quote unquote, whatever that means. And I'm gonna take up Ms. May's offer, see if she can identify all of the agencies. It may well be that our first step is just gathering information.
In that vein, if I could ask a single question, and I know we've been on this for quite some time, but some of the observations that Mr. Hart has made has caught, have caught my attention, and that doesn't reconcile with some of the, or perhaps it does, and I didn't, I missed it, that Mr. Belucci made, that we have a consultant that is testing all of the outfalls. So my question to Mr. Belucci is, is that if you could produce the reports that suggest to us that the conditions that Mr. Hart is describing has in fact been tested to your satisfaction? Could I ask Mr. Belucci to answer that question?
Certainly. We only test stormwater, which goes into a catch basin and goes out of pipe somewhere. We don't test the outfalls of the high school sewer system.
So we're looking at an outfall that's going directly into Nanakwaket Pond, is it much of a stretch to use that expertise that we already have at our disposal in order to confirm that there is or is not a problem?
It doesn't go out too directly into Nanakwaket Pond. It goes into the woods.
Right.
Into a wetlands, 'cause it's behind my house.
Right.
So it filters through that wetlands, and a wetland is a filter system. So, by the time it gets to the trout pond in Sinner Brook, it may already be, the nitrogen levels might be reduced. So, it's out in the woods, you're not gonna get to it very easily.
So there's now, there's not a 12-inch pipe, that, I must have misunderstood, there's not a 12-inch pipe emptying into, okay, all right.
It doesn't empty directly into Nanakwaket.
And then we would, we would be testing for fecal type of pollutants, not nitrogen loading. And I think what that, Dick Hart, is saying, nitrogen basically.
It's a nutrient for.
Yeah, nutrient to grow algae, and so I don't test for that, I test for color form tests, you know, to see if someone's dumping their septic system into our catch basin, so.
Thank you, Steve.
That's the difference, okay.
That's why it's interesting to see what the state and URI are testing for.
I agree.
Okay, one more comment?
I'll be quick. I took the tour of the sewer treatment plant at the high school last year, and it was my understanding that there was some bad days where ammonia accumulated in the manhole at the middle school, but they're pre-treating it now. So I'm not unaware that that sewer treatment plant is polluting anything. As far as I understand, we're in compliance at that sewer treatment plant at this time, but they are pursuing a septic system up there. The only thing, the pollution that's not talked about, is pollution that's created by automobiles passing down that road, dropping oil, and boats and jet skis and things like that. And I think that was part of the purpose of that letter. There is a group in town that wants to see recreational boating and jet skis and like that out of that pond. And if the oysters had gone into that pond, a no-wake zone would have, buoy would have followed it, which would have cut the water skiing and things like that. And I think a lot of that was the intent, is to cut the recreation in that pond. And that's why this committee kinda scared me, because I figured it would be people. But after listening to the comment from some of the residents there, it seems that it doesn't bother them, the boating out there. But I wouldn't wanna see a committee come together and recommend that we end boating on that pond to stop pollution. But oil is a problem on that pond, oil and gasoline.
I think the sense of the meeting at this point is, we'll continue this, I'll follow up with Ms. May, but I think at least we should try to, as a town council, get as much information as possible. If there are agencies out there, if there are, if the University of Rhode Island is doing something, we might as well get this, and we'll distribute it to council members. Maybe that'll make, at least we'll be able to make a more informative decision as to whether or not even an advisory committee makes any sense. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Counselor Leonard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I asked for an update on the development plans for the industrial park. From a procedural standpoint, it looks like item three, G3, and G3B are the same topic, so I would suggest that we combine those. This goes back to originally a grant from, I'm not, not sure, it goes back to work in which we were supported by the Newport Chamber of Commerce, and I have the original scope document. I recall going to a meeting over in Newport about it, and that started all this. And it's been going on for quite some time, and given the fact that the industrial park is an important part of our future, or as Mr. Stuart Hardin likes to say, the, what to see? The Enterprise Park, give him, give him a footprint for that, or a footnote. I thought it would be useful to get an update on where we're at on that, since we led the contract some time ago. So with that, I will ask Mr. Goncalo. And we, and we do have a written report that is part of the record, I wanna note.
Right, and you do have the written report, but for the benefit of those that do not have, just the report that the council has does list what's completed to date, the work in progress, and the upcoming work that needs to be done, which is, at this point, has not been started. We, they've had kickoff meetings, the town planner is spearheading this for us, and he has provided us with a report here, and without, you know, belaboring all the items that are in here, if there are any questions, the planner is here to certainly answer any detailed questions. But the, the progress is well underway.
Okay, well, I think that I would, would point out, the status report for the audience is, it talks about kickoff meetings, some internal work, water and sewer planning requests, some contact with Rhode Island Departmental, Department of Environmental Management. Work in progress items are wetland edge delineation, existing conditions survey, and number three is the town trying to acquire road as-built for Dupree to begin receive, receive reviewing content. Yet to be done, we have soil evaluation, conceptual drainage, review of town standards for lot creation, which I'm not sure those even exist at this moment, and then meet with town once the concept's done, and then a pre-application. So considerable has been done, there's some activity, and we have some work to do. And I might add from, just a footnote, when we talk about wetland edge delineation, that sounds like that's pretty simple, and I won't bore people with my background, but let me tell you, that is not simple, and it's enormously contentious, and I- tell you, that is not simple, and it's enormously contentious, and I shudder to think how many millions of dollars have been spent on lawsuits around this country doing just that one thing. So it's not as simple as it sounds.
And with, if I, if I may for a second, with regard to that, the, the wetlands were delineated, but it's been more than five years, so they have to be reexamined. And the other document that you should have is a letter that I wrote to Ron Gagnon. He's the chief of the Office of Customer and Technical Services at DEM, and that was requesting some assistance and putting together a team, and sort of an expedited team, that will work with Dupree Engineering, and that speeds up a lot of the wetlands delineation, where when the engineering firm goes in the field, delineates it, then they don't have to wait a long time for DEM to come by, verify it. They can actually work hand in hand with the engineering firm. So it's an expedited process. It was put together, I think, originally as part of the Quonset development project, so.
The other thing that I'd appreciate it if somebody would refresh my memory, when we let the contract, I can't remember when, we had an estimated completion date.
Yep.
Hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days. There was a delay in getting the contract signed through Newport County Chamber of Commerce. The delay was mainly because their, the attorney for Newport County Chamber of Commerce felt that the contract needed to stipulate the 501(c)(3) arm of the Newport County Chamber of Commerce. So the consulting person that's working with the chamber went back to SBA, and there was a long, protracted period in trying to get that name changed. In the end, they decided to keep it with the chamber. So the contract itself was signed on July 21st, and that's a contract with Dupree Engineering and the chamber, because the chamber is administering the grant. And then the second part to that was all the information that we were trying to assemble for the engineering firm. Some of that was the as-built for the road. We had a lot of digging up to try to find out where those were. Then we contacted the engineering firm. I asked, I sent a letter, a request for release of the electronic files, and there were a number of other issues that we were trying to get from other engineering firms that had done work in the, in the park. So the notice to proceed was actually, even though Dupree was doing some background information, the notice to proceed was actually today. So it's 180 days from today's date, which is February 6, 2011, so.
Just a high-level perspective here, so we, I'm accurate to say that we have this industrial park. We've had it for a while. We spent a lot of money on it. But here, we actually have an action plan that is really moving us forward. You know, it's going to take some time, another half a year probably, before we can really roll out a real operable action plan. It just seems to me this is, this is a, we're lost in, not lost in the weeds, but we're in the, in the details here, but this is at a higher level. This is, this is good progress for the town, it seems to me. Is that fair to say?
Yes, and also, it's important progress, and it's also for those who sometimes question why we pay our minimalist dues to the Newport Chamber of Commerce. This is just one example. For the small amount of money we pay annually in the dues, we have, I don't know, a 10,000% return on our investment, just on this one project.
And there are a couple other parallel projects that are going on within this. One of them is the creation of a floating zone that will land on the parcel, which will provide a number of allowable uses, and that will also look at some of the zoning issues that are related to the park. We'll be working hand in hand with Dupree Engineering, because one of the components we put in the RFP was to create a subdivision plan that really utilized the existing infrastructure and the topography, so we don't create a number of parcels that require so much site work with cut and fill, that they're unusable, or they're cost prohibitive for anyone to develop. And then the other thing we're working on is a creation of design development standards and guidelines, and that's going to be a little bit more of a graphic intense which, document, which will go hand in hand with the, with the zoning. And within that, what we'll do is create a number of different scenarios and things that we're going to be asking for them to, to do in terms of both the site work, the landscaping, signage, all those things. And it'll be, each section is going to be broken up into guidelines and standards. The standards are a little bit more explicit in terms of what they have to do. The guidelines are a little bit more negotiable. And the idea behind that entire template is, we can use that template in a number of different zones, you know, we'll customize it for the different zones. But then, when a developer comes in and looks at a specific site, and really meets the zoning and meets the intent and the, what we have in our design guidelines and standards, we can create an expedited permitting process, and that's, that's the whole goal behind that. And that's similar to what's been done down in Quonset.
And I just love to hear that we're making progress on design standards. As Mr. Spencer knows, it's one of my nag-nag points.
This one's a little more straightforward, because there's nothing built, other than the power plant.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr., under new business, Mr. Coulter?
We have to, with these minutes, no, just the minutes for the EDC, I think we have to approve them.
And actually, I'd like to discuss those minutes.
Yes, I want to discuss them also.
Before, before we get into that, I just want to say, I know it doesn't sound like it very often, but I think I speak for a lot of people in this room when I say that this industrial park, Commerce Park, Enterprise Park, whatever we decide to call it, is a very exciting step in the right direction for this town and the economic future of this town. And we're, we don't, that doesn't get enough attention, so. It doesn't sound like it, but I'm very excited about this.
Yes, and I would also add to the people that periodically come up to me and say, "Well, we're still paying for the industrial park and blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera." No, we're not. We paid for it several years ago. It's contributing a good amount of money to the general fund, and it has for many years. So I just want to throw that in. Now, on to item about the Economic Development Committee, minutes from the meeting, I think it was 5:12:11. On page five, it, they caught my attention where they said they were discussing, and this is what I think is a policy aspect that the council needs to weigh in on, and I quote on page five, first sentence of paragraph two, "EDC members discuss the potential for the town acting as landlord and recruiting costs as a percentage of profit as business increases," and so on and so forth. And I, I thought that was an important enough policy topic, because that has, from my perspective, that has some merit. For example, several years ago, I proposed that the town might be interested in developing a municipal power department, and that's not the right word, that would allow us to buy power from the power plant in the industrial park and then resell it to potential people that would occupy the Enterprise Park or what have you. That never went very far, but I still think that's something to be considered. Now frankly, there is some problems with that in terms of the power plant is subject to cutoff in times of really cold weather, so it's interruptible. But back to this, I wanted to bring it to everybody's, on the council's attention, and get a sense of the council, whether there is any enthusiasm for this proposal, or whether the EDC might be spinning their wheels. There are some problems, obviously, the, the big ones being, one, money. Where, where are we going to get the money to become a landlord? And the other one is expertise. The town does not have, within its structure, anyway, not at this moment, a whole lot of expertise being a landlord. So with that, Mr. President, I would ask my colleagues to have any comment they might have.
If I may, just make a comment, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Schmidt with EDC, the reason this is on the agenda is that we were looking at this from the context of, okay, we have a grant, now what are we going to do with it? And getting the property all laid out and designed to be sold or, or to be activated for some purpose of gathering revenue for the town involves the process of selling it, but to go back a little bit further, of marketing it. And the question of marketing comes up in the context of, is this covered by the grant to Dupree? What is the interface between Dupree and the marketing aspect that the town will have to take part in, or that will be part of? And oh, by the way, when this, when this arises, it will, it will create a need for advertising, will create a need for nomenclature, for example, the name of the park, and everything that goes with it, that makes this park saleable in today's market, and marketable. And that's, that's the reason these issues are raised, and that may involve additional expenses to the town, it may involve some, some special handling.
Well, the.
This is Ed Adod. He's, he's an experienced developer, and he's a member of the EDC, and might have a couple of words of music here.
Okay. Mr., I think Mr. Leonard was talking about the resale of energy. Is that correct?
That was one thing, that's, that's just an aside. That really doesn't have anything to do with this agenda item.
Okay.
That was completely different.
Just for clarification purposes, the report that thankfully the Newport Chamber got funded is a civil engineering report that talks about the development of the land, infrastructure, utilities, things of that sort. Once that's complete, all you're going to have is a guideline as to the dirt part of the property, utilities, roads, rock, issues like that. The next step will be to develop it. Roads will have to be built, utilities will have to be built. It's going to be very costly, and it may bear fruit, hopefully. And we would like to help make that process successful. And we think that the first important step is to hire a marketing agent, because the industrial park will be a complete flop unless we have one thing, customers. We need customers to rent or buy land, and customers are the name of the game. There are many, many communities who offer incentives to customers who want to come and build things in their community. We will have to be competitive with them, and there aren't that many of them around these days, as some of you probably know. So, once this report is complete, the next step will be to find some marketing people who can help tell us what customers need, or else nothing's going to happen there. And with all due respect, the design issues are really important and things of that sort are critical, but if we don't have design criteria that meet the needs of the customers, we're not going to have any customers. So I think what we'd like to try to do, and we've worked with Chris and talked to him about this, is once this report gets rolling, and once the infrastructure is analyzed, is to try to get a, an RFP out for marketing, this is what our recommendation would be, and to engage a marketing agent to help tell us about design use. I mean, for example, right now, manufacturing is not a permitted use in the industrial park, if you can believe that. So we need a list of uses, just to start things off, that will be not 1964 vintage, which, which is what you have now, but 21st century vintage. So people who are interested in the park won't have to go through a special permit process with the zoning board in order to find out whether they qualify to become a customer. So that's why we need a marketing agent. There's a lot of work that has to be done, and the first step is really to, to have a marketing plan with some professional marketing people.
Well, is something that you're not aware of, is the start of getting this report done and pursuing the grant, there was, a couple things came together. Mr. Stokes came to the council, and this goes back several years, with a proposal that he might be able to get a grant. And one of the reasons we, at that time, wanted to listen to Mr. Stokes was that we were talking about, we need to market the park. Before we can market the park, we have to have some definition around it. Before we have definition around it, we need to have some detailed information. We need to have a solid plan. So all those things went into consideration before the very start. We know perfectly well, we have to market it.
Right.
It goes back many years, and this is part of that effort. We don't want to be, anyway, at the time we did this, and that was a different council, we did not want to be in a situation where we had to react to whoever came along and said, "Oh, well, geez, somebody wants to put, to name an inflammatory use, an asphalt plant there." No. In years past, we've said, "We don't want an asphalt plant." We wanted to be able to say, "We're looking for certain specific types of business," and then market it that way. And given the fact that there are fewer and fewer industrial sites, or enterprise parks, whatever you want to call it, as each year goes by, we become a little bit more, have more leverage than we would have in the past. But I want to get to the part, and I want to hear from my colleagues, town acting as landlord. Is there any thoughts? And I'm thinking particularly of Mr. Coulter, because on the long-term financial plan, I don't think we envision ever getting in that situation. I think it has some merit.
Are you talking about being landlord in terms of building buildings and renting them to?
I'm talking about what's in your minutes, town acting as landlords and recruiting costs from the business profits. That's what I'm reacting to.
I might just, I might just take a couple of minutes on that, because I was at that meeting, and a very, very small part of that conversation. And it was a really interesting conversation, and a real exciting conversation to listen to. And it talked about public, we, we talked about public-private partnerships, and we were, you know, the, the EDC was sort of brainstorming and ideas, and one of the key examples is noted in the minutes is Faneuil Hall, that Boston, the city of Boston had a, had an agenda to bring in X amount of local establishments, non-chain restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. And they took control of Faneuil Hall and acted as a landlord, and they state they, there was some amount of, I don't know the nitty-gritty, Ed, but you, and Bob was talking about it as well, these partnerships that put the town, or the city, or the municipality or the state, or whoever is, is, is party to this, in a partnership role with, with private industry, in, in order to accomplish goals for both parties. And I think the, the generic example was a tenant coming to a property and being a landlord and supplementing the rent until such time as the tenant was stabilized, and then taking a percentage of sales over X. And, you know, it's all very complicated and all very variable, but one, one more time, I'm not, don't look excited, but it was a very exciting conversation. It was new ideas. It was really out-of-the-box thinking. It was, I was kind of impressed that it was brought up at a town meeting, because sometimes those sort of ideas aren't met with the greatest audience. And I, so I think it was a really neat conversation to be a part of, and I'll leave that at that, I suppose.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly a fan of the concept, and the two things that come to my mind aren't necessarily the industrial park. What comes to my mind is the old Brooks Drugstore, and oh my goodness, did I ever date myself there, because I remember when it used to be Brooks. And then, more recently, the Bank of America building. I would very much like to somehow kick-start some redevelopment in the north end's town. And right at this moment, don't ask me where we're going to get the money, because I don't have a clue. But until we have agreement that it would be worthwhile looking for it, and that's what I want to get, is I want to see, I'm excited, Mr. Pelletier is excited, and we just can't sit here and say, "Boy, it would be nice if somebody would come along and occupy the old Bank of America building." I think we have to be more proactive, and unfortunately, proactivity normally requires money. So conceptually, I, I want to hear from my colleagues, should I just shut up and go away? And Mr. Pelletier and I can both go away, but.
No, I would hope that you wouldn't shut up, or wouldn't go away.
I never will, you know that.
Stick with us a little bit. When I hear this conversation, I share an optimism about the future. When we talk about being a landlord or development, which requires investment, to me, the first word I think of is risk. When I look at the, when I look at the risk, we have to put it into the context of current economic conditions, the fact that national companies like Bloomberg and, give me another one, Forbes, tell us Rhode Island is the worst place in the country to do business.
They do.
And in the worst state in the country to do business, Tiverton is one of the worst towns, where at least we have a bad reputation. That suggests to me that the risk there is, how do we sell that? How do we market it in order to overcome that risk, in order to make it feasible in our lifetimes to develop this park and to be successful at it? I think it, I think there's a lot of things we could stub our toe on.
Oh, and I would agree. Certainly, the reputation for the state as being anti-business is well documented, that the horrid financial condition of the state is more than well documented, and the national mess, to be kind. But I think, looking at it from the standpoint, if I put my marketing hat on, Tiverton has a lot of things going for it. We're a waterfront community. We have a lot of open space. We have Whitemo Woods hiking trails. We have Fort Barton.
Logistically, it's close to highways, and industrial park is close to that.
Yes.
I agree. But that, really, in my mind, requires a high level of degree of expertise with marketing. Which direction do we have to go in, in order to be successful down the road?
Yep.
So, if that involves some level of investment, you know, I'd like to know how much that is, because the return on that could be nothing, or it could be tenfold, or it could be a hundredfold.
Well, there's plenty of marketing expertise out there, but it does boil down very quickly to how much money, you know? It's the old-fashioned, you got the money, honey, I got the town.
Because we'll be competing with Fall River, and, what is it, Fall River and Free Town?
Free Town and now Taunton.
And Taunton.
Somebody told me to take a trip to the Taunton Industrial Park. I took a trip about three or four months ago.
Right.
The park is so large, I'm not exaggerating.
It's easy to get lost there.
I got lost, and I had to put my GPS on to get out of the park.
Well, I could get out.
We don't have that. I can't make up a story like that. But it gives you some ideas of what we're competing against.
So, does the money that's been given, well, you know, in this grant from the Chamber of Commerce, can we use that for marketing?
No.
Well, I think the short answer is no.
No.
That's not what the intent was, that's not what the intent of the RFP was, if I may.
When we kicked the whole thing off, we said, and this goes back again years, different council, two different councils, we said, "We're going to have to do a selling job, just like Mr. Lambert said. We've got competition, we've got a lot of competition." So, we said, "Okay, we're, we have an abstract vision of somewhere we're going to get money for marketing." We didn't worry about it at that moment, where that was going to come from. This predates the current economic conditions. And I think if anything, the current economic conditions may actually give us somewhat of an advantage, because I have a hunch, cynic that I am, that as we approach November of 2012, there'll probably almost be federal helicopters flying over our heads, throwing hundred-dollar bills at us to get the economy moving. So, there may be some opportunities that we can get grant money to do marketing. But I also want to expand the conversation beyond the park. Think about North Tiverton. For instance, the gentleman here tonight is going to use the old CVS building. We should learn the real landlord of that, and start calling it by the proper name instead of the Rhode Island style of the old whatever. But anyway, there's a gentleman who's coming in, going to do some brownfield, to use the buzzword, brownfields redevelopment work. Well, we have some other empty buildings up there. What can we do? Maybe if we could become an investor, maybe if we became a cosigner, I don't know.
If I could just make another comment, first of all, I'm excited to echo what you just said about having this conversation here tonight. I think it's very timely. And also, I'd like to make the comment about Tiverton. This is probably the best tract of land on there against the bay, as far as quality and location and access, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the problems that we have in this town with regard to permitting and zoning and whatever thing you want to bring up that might prevent people from coming in and developing here are not unique. And I don't think we should be talking about our town as being unique in that respect. I mean, there's a lot of pluses here. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Ed for a minute, because he's got some adds to the marketing aspect.
Well, just to talk about what Brett was talking about, which, Boston has, this is a long subject, so I'll try to be brief, has a long track record of enhancing development appeal to customers, if you will, with creative techniques. For example, Faneuil Hall Marketplace, the one that Brett just mentioned, is actually owned by the city of Boston. But because at the time, it was such an innovative project, the city couldn't get any customers to take over the property. So, they put it up for development for 25% of the gross revenues. It was my business, and I'm from Boston. And the city made a deal with the Rouse Company initially to take over the whole property and pay the city 25% of all the gross receipts they collected from the property. And that was a multi-million dollar investment for the city. But needless to say, over the years, it's been a cash cow for the city, but it took some great courage to do that. Other examples are, in the case that was just mentioned about Mr. Leonard's two properties, which would be a great catalytic, you know, development, if we could ever make it happen, would be the city or the town could acquire the ownership of the land and then lease the land to an attractive user who might help to regenerate some interest in the area under very favorable terms. So, for example, if the land were acquired, these aren't the right numbers, for $100,000, let's say, it could lease it out for 4% of that, whereas a developer might need to pay 7% to 10%. And in so doing, it would be that much less expensive for the developer, and it might entice him or her to come into our community. So, those are examples that require some courage and some cash, but they can make a big difference. I can sit with you, if you'd like, and tell you other examples that I've been involved with, but those are two examples, one for each of the properties.
And I think it's important also that we're having this conversation now, because in order to do the deal, you need to be in the position to do the deal. And so, you know, you can't, you can't do the deal after the tenant has come and gone. So, at least talking about, what we're talking about is important, to get the steps in line and start discussing alternative ways of doing what we're trying to do, because it doesn't help us if we, you know, look back on things as they pass us by. So, we need to be in a position to act one way or the other. And, you know, even just having the conversation, I think, is a step in the right direction.
A big issue for the industrial park, which is a different animal than North Tiverton, which, since we live there, we're very interested in that area, but for the industrial park, tax-exempt bond financing is always a factor for a user. And the, you know, the classic situation is the user would like to see the town build the facility with tax-exempt bond financing, and then lease it to them at an interest, at a rate that reflects the preferential interest rate that they got on the tax-exempt bonds. And a lot of communities do that, and that's how they entice tenants into coming to their community versus another community. There's some tricky issues, though, with respect to that, because, and this is where you need bond counsel to help, as part of a team, to redevelop that property, as to whether you can do that for one particular user and not for others. It's a preferential treatment question that always comes up, and it's always controversial. But if General Modus came in and said, "We want to build a manufacturing facility here," you'd have some real challenges, you know, putting that together, but it'd be worth a try. So, one of the many players, the first player we need is a marketing agent to tell us where the customers are and what they're looking for. And then, you probably need bond counsel, which is not expensive, because lawyers are always looking for opportunities, as these gentlemen will tell you. And they might give us some guidelines on what we, how this whole bond technique might work. But ultimately, we'd require the good faith or the guarantee of bonds by the community, which would probably require a vote of the town and so forth. So, it's complicated, but we should be thinking along those lines. Brett's right. And to the extent we can get creative, we have a better chance of making the park a success.
And before marketing, there's money, and that's where I keep coming back to the same question. Brett and I have expressed our views.
I think it's, I think it's, the concept is great. I guess the first question would be, where do we come up with the money, and exactly what would we do with the money? I'll give you the example that I've been thinking of for years. What do you do with North Tiverton? I'm sure you could buy a piece of property up there really cheap. But what would you develop up there? What would you put up there? You're going to really have an office complex that you're going to invest in, that you'd find people that would invest in an office complex, a manufacturing facility, retail shops?
Nope. First thing I'd do, and I'll be, I'll be very short, and so we can move on. First thing I'd do, if I suddenly had money from heaven come down, I would buy that old Brooks drug and that Bank of America piece of property, and I would make an urban playground park out of it initially, to create a sense of community. I would have some fountains, I would have some gathering places, I would keep letting people know that this was a transitory situation, but get people to be thinking about the community, and to start showing people that there's a lot in North Tiverton. There's restaurants, there's different styles of living, there's condominiums, you look at Ford Farm, there's a lot there. And start with a sense of community, and I've seen this, this is not an original idea. I've seen other cities and towns do exactly this. I watched Baltimore start when they eventually developed the aquarium downtown. But I've seen smaller towns start with this community park concept, to where it really started to get people thinking. And all of a sudden, instead of North Tiverton just being a straight road with some empty buildings, to get rid of the empty buildings, perhaps not the Bank of America building, but the drugstore building has been empty for so long now, I've got to wonder what kind of shape it's in. And you have some developable land. So, that would be the first thing I would do, if it was me, because a secondary thing I might think about is I would be thinking of medical offices, I would be thinking about more computer-oriented stuff, information technology. If we indeed, if the state ever gets off their duff and ever really puts a broadband trunk down here, we'd be in a better position to pursue more IT-oriented businesses. And that's what we're going to have. As Mr. Nelson says, you know, no big national company is going to come in here. I was at a meeting a couple of years ago where the former president of General Electric was at this thing, and the Lieutenant Governor of Massachusetts asking what he would do if one of his, if he was still the president of GE, if one of his executives suggested building a new plant in Massachusetts. And his instant answer, much to the chagrin of the Lieutenant Governor, the then Lieutenant Governor of the state of Massachusetts, was, he said, "I'd fire him immediately." So, no, we're not, we're not going to get any big firm. We've got to start attracting some people, some startups, some entrepreneur things. And there is stuff going on. And Len is right, we're not unique. In my full-time job, I get involved in economic development, and believe me, the other towns in this area have just as convoluted permitting, et cetera, et cetera, as we do, in many cases even worse, if you can believe it. And I think I've taken enough time, so, ask me another question.
Yeah, well, I think we have to move on from this subject, but I think the answer to your question, Cecil, was that everybody's interested in the concept. It's just, I guess the devil really is in the details and in trying to find the money, and trying to find the...
How much money?
Yeah.
One quick comment, if I may.
How much money? Because we keep saying we need money. Is it a million? Is it 10? Is it half a million? How much do we need?
Not 10, not 10, more than a million.
What I would suggest is, it'll take time, but in probably, hopefully, two months will be at a range where I'll be asking all of us to come back with, and I haven't found a better name of this yet, than wishlist items and major product items, and to try to rank order them. And this concept right here seems to me that it's just the type of thing that, that would be a great time to try to have that conversation, along with all the other wonderful ideas that, because if it is something in the 1 to 2 million dollar range, I think it may take five, 10 years, it may take a lucky break here or there, but, you know, it is something, if we plan for it, I think it's, it is feasible. It just, I will save my extensive remarks till then, but I, I've decided that we should stop saying that Tiverton is not friendly to business. And as I was sitting here, I just, I wrote a list down of all the things. You know, we're talking about revamping our tax abatement progress. Mr. Nelson has the fees on there, and I've already told him that I'm going to ask that we cut some of our fees. We've approved things such as the singing-out programs. Taxes are the number one issues that deter business. We've had some great conversations about that. We're showing that we're in control. We're talking about long-term planning, pays you throw, we're trying to help out Bay Street planning and zoning. We formed a coordination committee that Mr. Pelletier is working hard on. We're making progress in the industrial park that we haven't seen in years, licenses, permits, and in general processes, that our government is following ordinances and following procedures, and we have a grocery store just today, and a wonderful gourmet restaurant just opened up a month or two ago. So, I, when you do the sort of consultant speak, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis, I've decided that we don't need to tell everybody that we're not business-friendly. I think, I think we are, I think we're showing it, I think we're proving it, and I'm going to continue to trumpet that. Thank you.
No, we're, I think we're going to follow your advice, and I tend to agree with you. I think with the people that you've heard here tonight, Tiverton is business-friendly. Our real disadvantage is that we're in Rhode Island. And our second disadvantage is that we're next door to Massachusetts and Fall River. Not much we can do about those two issues. Mr. Coulter, item number four.
Nope, we need to approve these minutes, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we didn't approve the minutes, okay.
Just accept them.
And on that unhappy...
Accept the minutes.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I have discussion on that.
Second, for discussion.
So, I, actually, Mr. Leonard, I didn't know what you were, why you had pulled this, but I have concerns with item number three, which shows on page two. I'm happy to approve these minutes today, but I'd like that set for discussion in the future. It doesn't have to be the next meeting, but at whatever point, Madam Clerk and Mr. President, I think we can squeeze in 15 minutes on that. Thank you.
Okay. We have a second to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all of those in favor? Anyone opposed? Item number four, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, long-term financial plan. At the last meeting, I distributed a spreadsheet that had 56 action items on there. I don't think we're going to cover 56 action items tonight, but one of the things that I'd like to do is to start to try to take one or two of these and sort of steadily make some progress on this. And I had envisioned this conversation to be about 15 minutes. I'm happy to let it pass. But you may recall, back in January, I had distributed a draft policy for us to consider as to what target amount our reserves should... as to what target amount our reserves should be. So, thinking more broadly about where we're going, and it'll take a long time to finish this, obviously, it could take as long as a year, but we should begin with sort of the essentials and the basics of our funding needs, think about what our liabilities are and work ourselves through sort of the longer-term capital projects and wishlist items. So, the first one, the very first one, is that we have to have enough funds in the unreserved general fund to comply with the charter, which the town has not had the charter required 3% reserves until this year in some time. So, that's good news because we've already met the, the target there. So, what, and this doesn't have to be adopted as policy tonight, but what I would ask is that, is if you take a look at this draft policy, which attempts to recognize that we can't just have $1 and $1 only above the absolute minimum 3%, because the 3% is meant for emergencies, and to dip below that emergency, you need to have a four-fits vote of this council, it's required by charter. That practice has not been followed in the past, but I'm quite sure this council would follow that practice. So, the question is, well, how much more than 3% do we need? And we all seem to have a belief that the higher the reserves that you have makes for smart budgeting and that you can deal with normal variations. And in addition, there's some thinking that more reserves generally means lower borrowing costs, although the actual amount of that correlation is a little unclear, and I think it would take, take some studying. If, for example, if we had 10% of reserves instead of 3%, our interest rates, our average, you know, duration-weighted interest rate was only 4.1% instead of 4.2%, it wouldn't really make a, a difference if we're talking about adding $7 million. So, my, my question to the administrator, to the treasurer, Madam Clerk also in a role as acting past treasurer, is to try to get a sense of, you know, what number do we think? Now, this is just policy, it's not binding policy, we would just incorporate this into our requests, when we make our requests to the Budget Committee and then to the people. But eventually, we're going to face a point where we're going to have to think about, where are we going to allocate scarce dollars? And so, getting the unreserved fund from, say, 3% up to maybe 5%, but getting there at a quarter-point increment over the next few years seems to me like a pretty good, good place to start that discussion. So, if you'd like to, to chew on that, that'd be fine. If, if the treasurer was waiting all this time to speak to this, I'd certainly appreciate letting her the opportunity to speak, but otherwise, I don't want to believe her this.
I'd like to hear the specific conversation from an expert as to the remarks that you just made about the interest rate that we pay on bonds as it relates to the amount that we have in our general fund. I mean, everything I heard this evening preceding this conversation suggested that we're going to be, maybe we'll, we'll need to borrow money. So, in order to nail down really what that should be, I would guess that there's some kind of municipal formula that enables us to understand what that ideal amount should be. Too much is a waste of money, not enough, we pay too high an interest rate. Who could give us that answer?
The Treasury.
Is it the treasurer now, or are there resources at the state that would give us that information?
Well, I will let the current treasurer speak for herself. I can tell you, when I was treasurer, I used to have conversations with the bond people, and they always liked at least 10%. And I was always asked the question, "Well, if I have a 10%, what's that going to do for my interest rate?" And I would get these really long-winded, convoluted, "Well, that depends." So, I was, I've never been able to tie down a direct correlation. I'm rather fond of, of taking the step of going from 3% to 5% in increments and then going from there. But there's very little, in the past, there's been no enthusiasm to bump it up from 3% to 5%. But I think that's something we've got to do. I mean, when you really think about it, in today's litigious world, the reserve we have is woefully inadequate. If anything really of serious nature happened, and God forbid we weren't covered by our, our insurance, we'd be in deep trouble.
Well, in the past, or at least up in my brief experience, the, in the incremental amounts that we're adding to the reserve fund are a result of, of surpluses that we're not really planning. So, to put, to say we're going to plan an additional half point, I'm not sure is, is the proper methodology, but that it should be 5%? I would support that. And if we have a surplus this year and had one last year, and we anticipate one next year, if we said, "We'll put all of that surplus towards the general fund and it won't drop below, until it gets to 5%," I would support that, because I think it makes sense.
I don't think anybody would disagree with that. The first couple of years that I was on this town council, the only question is, "Where are we going to get money? Where are we going to get money?" And now we finally have actually met our charter requirements at the 3% level.
To put it in perspective, I'm sorry.
I think that puts it in perspective. I, that was the first time since I was on the town council that we even met the charter requirement, so that 5% seems really doable if the economy ever turns around.
And we have 500, 500K this year as a surplus?
No, we have $1,808,000. Oh, you mean this, this year?
Being produced in this year's fiscal year, what is our surplus?
My guess, simply a guess, was a quarter of a million.
A quarter of a million.
Well, 5% is, you know, pretty low when you think about, really, 3% is the absolute floor. So, you're really talking about a 2% cushion if we're going to respect the charter and say that 3% is really for emergencies. A 2% is something like, 2%... I mean, that is a really tight, you know, most of us that run businesses would want to have reserves of, you know, 10, 20, you know...
I think we're saying that's at a minimum, and it would be an interim step.
Let me, let me explain where the 5% came from. Well, the Charter Review Commission, at least some of us on the Charter Review Commission tried to increase at 3%. I initially proposed that we move up to 10% in incremental steps, and I was quickly...
Rebuffed?
Rebuffed, vigorously rebuffed at 10%. So, I slunk down to 5%, and that at least resulted in some conversation before I was rebuffed. But again, from all quarters, and I won't name names even though I could, but I'll just simply say from all quarters.
Well, you must be feeling good now because you're not getting any rebuff, are you?
We haven't, we haven't moved it up to 5% either. But anyway, that's where the 5% came from. But I, my initial move was 10%, and that goes back to when I was treasurer, because that's, that's a number that the, the people that buy bonds and underwrite bonds like to see. And they're never satisfied, let's face it. You know, it's like we've all heard the old saying, bankers only loan money to people that don't need it. Well, the people that underwrite bonds are kind of the same way.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's just a ma, just one, one element to the underwriting of municipal or any bond for that matter. And so, you know, it's really hard to pull out, I think, at least, if we pump 10% into the general fund, what's the bottom line? You know, is it 50 basis points? Is it whatever on the, on the rate we're paying? So, I'd have to agree with Cecil on that. The other question I had was, Rob, what in real numbers is a 25 basis point a year addition, round numbers?
Well, what do we have, about $20 million in bonds outstanding right now? That is the, putting me on the spot here with some...
No, no, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant reserves.
We would have to add just over $100,000 a year to the unrestricted reserve to move it up a quarter of a...
Oh, right, I'm sorry. I, I think of it as 1% is about 300 grand on the levy. So, and our total town budget is something like 40 million plus another $8 million on off-budget items like the half million in wastewater that we just did. So, I think 400 grand per percent, or like Mr. Colton said, a quarter points, 100.
And that would interpret, at today's rates, that would interpret to be 5 cents per thousand or, on the average home, 15, 16 dollars a year.
Yeah, it wouldn't change very much, though.
Which is not a lot.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I've had a lot of discussions informally with Consulor Coulter, you know, about this concept of, you know, being right at the 3% or having a little cushion. Obviously, you need some sort of a range. I'll just put my taxpayer hat on to say that every, every percent that we have for a cushion is a percent essentially that the taxpayers have given to the general fund as the cushion. So, on that note, to start exceeding like 5%, I, I think could be a questionable burden perhaps to put on, on the taxpayers, but I do understand that a percent or two cushion is probably reasonable.
Well, I think Mr. Coulter is suggesting that we do that over a period of years in any event.
Right. And, and the, the real point is though, and, and I, I agree, and there are wild swings with this, and I mean, as a former chairman of the Budget Committee, it's difficult to know where you're going to come out with these things. So, we, we could have a, of a goal, an iterative goal of always trying to pin it at a quarter percent higher, and we could find the swings are much greater than that, and that's fine. But the, the real issue, I think, that goes hand in hand with this, which is what I haven't heard yet, is that eventually, when we get to the 5%, or should we get a couple of windfall years and all of a sudden we find ourselves at 5.6% in that number, is, what goes hand in hand is to say, "Okay, now it's time to recommend that we give some back to the taxpayers in, in the form of an offset like was a practice years ago." So, we can talk about getting to the 5%, and someday we'll get there, and someday we're going to find ourselves at 5 point, or at 6%. One year, all of a sudden, boom, we're at 6%. And I think what goes hand in hand with this discussion is, what do you do then? And I would hope that perhaps if 5% is the number, that the, the policy would be that we're going to give it back to the people, or we're going to recommend that it go back to the people as a revenue line to offset the, the tax levy. So, I just offer that for consideration. I think that, you know, it's just the other half of the conversation. If you're going to ask somebody to build up the general fund to 5%, it's, might be good to also say, anything beyond that, we're going to have our cushion, we're going to give back. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would, would just build on that a little bit by saying that I think that once we get a long-term financial plan in place, we're going to have better tools to explain to the taxpayers what we're doing with extra money. In the past, the taxpayers, as Mr. Karen just described, have been, they were, they were some of the folks that rebuffed me before. It's a matter of, well, you know, it just goes into this bottomless pit, and you people in town hall just who knows what. Whereas, as we delineate our financial plan more, with more structure, then I think whatever council happens to be here at that time will have something to talk about. And I think that's a lot more persuasive argument than just a, a general, "Well, gee, let's, let's bump it up to 10%, and that way we can get a, a lower bond rating." Because the average taxpayer, I mean, they're busy living their lives, you know? They have kids to worry about, so on and so forth. And they don't have time to really get all wound up in this stuff. But if you have a framework to present it, then I think it's a much more believable, incredible situation.
Well, that's, that's the goal, and you can see a little sneak preview of that. And I, I should have said, what I've added that you haven't seen in the past is a statement of policy interests, and I've listed five policy interests that we recognize, and we know, we don't pretend that we know them all. But one of them specifically states that amounts above and beyond 3% to some degree amount to taxpayer dollars above and beyond that minimally required for current operations. That's the fourth bullet point. And the fifth one says the same thing, and it also says that taxation dollars are not being otherwise deployed. So, now, I, I think the idea here is that policy interests will sometimes go against each other, but we want to at least force ourselves to recognize the trade-offs. And, and what you're getting, to, to Mr. Karen's point, what I would envision, and you see a sneak preview in paragraph six where I put in brackets priority level A, but I foresee a point where we try to reach some consensus on a tier of priority levels. And once you hit your priority level A, like, let's say for, since this would just be ratcheting up, the next year would be 3.5%. If you have more than 3.5%, then it's time to think about other priorities in that tier offsetting the tax rates returning to the taxpayers. So, so I just want to suggest that the comments, at, at least the framework that I envision accommodates the remarks of both Mr. Karen and Mr. Leonard.
Okay, item number five, under new business, Mr. Pelletier?
Should I ask, I'm sorry, should, should I ask just one thing? I just, a question for, referred to maybe the town administrator and the town solicitor is, what we define the current operating budget in for charter purposes and whether that includes the schools? And when I get that resolved, then I'll, I'll probably bring this for passage. Thank you.
We consider the total budget, the operating budget for the schools includes the debt service, the whole, that's what we consider.
Just, but the 40 million, not the 8 million off-budget items? So, it's not 48 million?
When you say 8 million off-budget, I'm not sure.
All the other sort of revenues that aren't part of the regular... If you look at the, if you look at the audit report, it looks like we do $48 million of business, not 40. So, that's one of my...
Right, all these separate revenue funds, we don't...
They would not count.
And I would, I would add, with all due respect to Mr. Gonzala, that it's not universal agreement about, "Oh, we do the whole 40." I happen to agree with him, but not everybody does. There's arguments made that debt service is not part of operating, capital equipment purchases is not part of an operating budget. So, I think your question is well put, and I'll be interested to see the answer.
See what I come up with. I'll propose an answer, and if anybody, especially anyone in the public, especially the treasurer, anybody has any thoughts on, I'm hearing consensus on going from 3% to 5% over the next eight years isn't too radical, so I'll probably assume that unless I hear otherwise. Thank you.
I don't think it's radical at all.
I think it's too conservative.
Yeah, I would, I would have thought it too conservative, yeah. We'll see what, what happens with the economy, really.
I'd like to see you do it in half the time, at least.
Consulor Pelletier?
Yeah, I would respectfully request that we switch these two items around, discuss six first and five second, if that's all right with everyone. Number six is just, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we talked about this earlier this season, this summer, about getting a, a better handle on boards and commissions. And Rob and I are talking about policy, and we're now appointing new reps and new, and reappointments and things, so I thought it was a good time to bring up this discussion about, you know, how are we getting information from boards and commissions? And I know we had talked about implementing some schedule for reports to the, formal reports to the council, and whether that be in person or in writing or a combination of those things. And I think those are very important items that we, we ought to be on notice of, and, or at least more on notice than we have been in the past. So, I'm requesting that we come to some sort of arrangement that would get a more formal, verbal or hard copy, deliverable report to the council at least once a year, all of the, the salient details or initiatives of the, each of these boards and commissions, and whether that's just a request we make to the administrator or what, what, I'm not certain exactly what we, what is the best methodology for getting a hold of that information. But I think it's important information we ought to have in a more sort of structured, formal way. Because, you know, just, just listening to, just talking to the folks who come up in front of us for reappointment or appointment period, it's, it's, it's been terrific listening to these folks, hearing what they're doing, meeting them for the first time a lot of times. It's, it's, it's something we don't get to do very often, and I think that's a shame. It's, it's, um, it's something we don't get to do very often, and I think that's a shame, because these boards and commissions do a heck of a lot of work for the town and a heck of a lot of good for the town. Um, and even if we're just better informed as to what they do and how they do it, I think it's, it's, it's a good, it's a good goal to get to, so. I don't know if anybody has any, any, any ideas or comments, or Jim, you have a quick and dirty, or what?
Well, we can certainly try to enhance the reporting of the boards and commissions, but one thing we need to understand is that these are all volunteers. And I know that these are requirements, okay, but for, to force them, to do them in a timely manner and put additional responsibilities on them may sour them, okay? When you, when you look at your packet, you see the, the time delay when we get a lot of the reports from the boards and commissions. I mean, I can certainly try to enhance it, I can try to have them do it in a more timely manner, but we've got to be careful when we're, when we're talking to volunteers who don't get paid, who do a lot of work, and, and now we want, you know, more administrative responsibility placed on them. I'm, I'm not against it, but I just think it's, it's, we have to tread lightly.
Uh, I mean, I'm not asking to, to, to burden these people with undue responsibilities. I'm asking essentially to fulfill the responsibilities that they're expected, um, that are expected. Um, and I'm not, I'm not trying to drag people in front of the council for, for a hearing. I just, uh, I want to get some of this information out, and I want to get it to us so we can, we can be more involved in the board and commission aspect of running this town, um, because I think it's important.
Well, I try to get annual reports from them at the time of, or just before the financial town meeting, to include, because I put a general man, I, I put an administrator's report out, and I try to get one paragraph from a lot of the boards and commissions as to what have they done, what are they involved in, and where are they going? Just a short synopsis, and it's very difficult.
But I'll use this as an example. The EDC was here tonight, and every time the EDC is here, we have a good conversation. Tonight was the, probably the best conversation we've had with the EDC at the council level. We need to have more of those conversations, and we need to have more of those conversations with more boards and commissions in this town, I think. If I'm not totally overstepping the, the role of the council, but I, that kind of thing is important to me. The discussions we have with each other is important. I don't like the idea of not knowing any of these people, not knowing what they do, what they're doing on it, you know, and reading very, very brief minutes, which I appreciate are a pain to, to write, because I can't, I can't stand it. But, there's got to be a way we can try to do more.
Well, we can certainly, you know, just thinking about it as we're going along here, uh, it might not be a bad idea to ask the chair of the board on a quarterly basis, set up some kind of a schedule, and just have the chair come before us and just give us an update.
Yeah, that's all I, that's all I...
Yeah, I was going to, that's a great idea. Why don't we try something like we had tonight? I don't think it would be quite as complex, but, uh, we have probably twenty-two meetings a year. I don't think we have. We skip every once in a while. Uh, what is it? Two, two times twelve, twenty-four, and we skip a couple. So, about twenty-two. I don't know how many boards and commissions we have, but maybe we could start a practice, but if you put together a schedule, a proposed schedule, of just inviting one of the groups. It might, it might be the cemetery committee. I can't believe they have that much to report, but it could be the cemetery committee, so we'll put that, you know? Uh, it's not all going to be one-hour sessions or one-and-a-half hour sessions. Just, uh, do we, we have an, an arts commission, we have a historical commission, uh, just, just one at every meeting, just, and, and it would be verbal. I mean, just, just let us know what the heck you've been up to and where you're planning to go.
Or, you know, a handful of related, so if you get three small ones, you know? And we have a couple that are sort of intertwined.
Yeah, I, I don't think they'd mind, you know, a, a five or ten or minute, you know?
And they could, well, it would be, I say easier, it would be easier to make a, an oral presentation, but also we'd have the opportunity to ask some questions. We might have some questions that aren't answered in a written report.
True.
And then have an informative meeting like we had tonight.
I can certainly...
If properly sold, I, I don't think that they would view this as a burden, but I think they'd instead view it as the town council taking a great deal of interest in their activities, and giving the, giving the opportunity to ask for support, or even to ask for help that we know that this forum can produce.
I think a short quarterly presentation would be...
Mr. President, I like your idea, uh, of having one of, one of mission, one of each time, or a couple of the smaller ones. Also, I see that we still have a very brave committee chairman who has endured, perhaps we could elicit his opinion.
I thought he was just captivated by the discussion.
I'm hoping that they come up under the administrators' name.
Under the heading of, no, no good deed goes unpunished.
Candidly, I was sitting here, and I was thinking, no, the opportunity to come forward and say, this is something we put forward and you haven't seen it or noticed it in our scintillating minutes, um, our committee would probably appreciate that. I mean, ours is a commission that actually generates general income for the town, but the, um, and is controversial at times, obviously, but the, uh, I, I think most would appreciate the opportunity, although they'd probably want to be put at the front end versus the back end of the agenda, because not many people have the...
Fair enough, fair enough, yeah.
That'd be a nice opening.
Well, why don't we start off then with that? Jim, uh, you put a list together. How many, how many boards?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Well, that leads Mr. Pelletier to the next item, which is the last item of new business.
Actually, before we go there, um...
They would probably combine them.
One of the things I, I wanted to jump in, and we've actually talked about this kind of a proposal before, because it seems to me that you'd want to have that report, and then, a month or two later, proceed to fill vacancies and terms, and, and this has been on my to-do list to help work on this policy with Nancy and Brett, but is there any particular reason why we have to take all of these boards and commissions in one shot? Because if we, if we clustered all of our boards together and say, for the first quarter we did economic issues, and for the second quarter we did preservation issues and so forth, hear the annual report, and then two months later, restaff the committees, then you would have an idea of what type of needs we might need to be filling, what type of progress the boards have made. Is there any reason why we can't stagger our appointment progress to, process to be in line with this annual review process?
To answer your question, um, there was, there was two parts to that answer. Uh, one, um, it's a little bit cleaner in administrative keeping track of having it done all at once, and one of the solicitors somewhere along the line thought that was a good thing. The other part was just the pleasure of the council. There's absolutely no reason that if the current council has a different pleasure, we can't change it. Um, I don't, there's nothing magic, uh, about having, doing it all at once. The theory, the theory was that, let's just do it all at once and we're done with it.
But it still has taken us three meetings with another fourth schedule to wrap them up, so...
So, there's absolutely no reason the, the council can't change that process, as far as I know.
It'd take time, and you'd have to go over, because these are all defined terms already, with dates that expire and so, so it would take time to, but it certainly isn't impossible.
Are you okay with that, Brett? If we coupled this rolling schedule of reviews with a view towards, over time, doing the appointment or reappointment process, perhaps two, two months afterwards, so that we and the public could see what's going on with the committee, and then say, wow, this committee's looking for a pollution biologist, I think I can do that, and then sort of jump in, so...
Yeah, I think that's great. I think a lot of times, we, you know, people have actually said to me that when they come to these, come to meetings, that there's an update of, uh, you know, the board or commission, and then they realize that the vacancy was filled, you know, a month ago, because they didn't, they weren't on notice of it. I think that's a great timeline. I think that's a, I think, absolutely.
And I would be of...
Any help I can be to facilitate that.
And, and certainly there is an added benefit to having these, um, people come before the council, to give them recognition while they're here for their efforts.
Oh, yeah.
So, it, it, we can...
You know, and it, you know, uh, we're more visible to everyday citizens as well that watch on television or, or, or read in the paper what goes on in our meetings, and I think to have a voice, to sit there for five minutes and plead the case of the conservation commission, or whatever it is on television, or whatever, you know? It, I think that, that also would help, help those guys out. Onward and upward. Um, so do we need any formal action on that, or we just, we, we know what we're doing?
Yeah, I think we'll wait to get a, a schedule for Mr. Gonzo out.
Well, and someday I'm going to, well, court, I, just, um, to do the long-term plan, I got the model contract, then I'm going to grab that and then get to the streets policy, so...
All right, the next one is just, um, I want to try and start the conversation of trying to get liaisons on at least some of the boards and commissions. You know, we have two, I think, or three, uh, formal liaisons to boards and commissions. I would like that number to be much higher. There are a lot of boards and commissions in town that I think would benefit from a council liaison, and I think we would benefit from that insight to, um, you know, the goings-on of the, what I consider pivotal boards and commissions in this town. I'm not certain that all twenty-seven need a seat, um, probably less than half of that immediately, but I think it's an important, uh, role for us as counselors to take an active participatory role, or even just, uh, you know, not, not participatory, just sort of sit back and, and watch and, and listen just to a lot of these boards and commissions. You know, I have a, a, a wish list of, you know, probably twelve or thirteen that I think are, are most important, um, and then I suppose we can talk, um, talk some more as to the, the feeling of the council. If this is something, you know, the council is interested in, I, I really would encourage this sort of idea.
Now, I, I think that there are some, some boards and commissions that are helped by having a liaison with the town council. I think my suggestion at this point, though, would probably be to everyone on the town council, perhaps, to come up with a one or two proposals, maybe passing them on to Mr. Pelletier. I mean, I can see an obvious reason, for example, for the landfill committee. Uh, on the other hand, I'm not so sure that a liaison with the, uh, ancient cemeteries committee would necessar...
Right, right, right.
I don't even think they want us, you know? So, uh, or, or even the arts commission, for that matter. So, I think we, we, it's just a question of coming up with an appropriate list, and, and then I think we can identify ones that would be helped a little bit by having some, some, somebody serving as, you know, their, their advocate here on the town council, at least for informational purposes.
Well, Mr. President, the, um, I'll share my approach. I keep an eye on the minutes, and I keep an eye on the agendas, and when things pop up on the agendas and/or the minutes, I make it my business to go to the meetings. Frankly, I tend to go to some of the less well-known committees every once in a while just to see what's going on. And I don't, don't interfere, I don't step on anybody's toes, I try to just sit in the back and observe. But I try to go to any number, and some of you may recall that in the past I've encouraged fellow members of the council to do the same thing, uh, because in previous terms on the council, you know, I became embarrassed by the fact when people would come up for a reappointment, I didn't know what kind of job they were doing, and so on and so forth. So, that's what originally motivated me is to start going to some of these meetings, was so I got to know people. Um, and frankly, that's what I'll continue to do. It takes a little extra work watching the agendas, um, but Nancy publishes the schedule of all the meetings monthly, and that, that helps. That's a very good enabling piece of paper, and you can pretty well see, um, from the minutes what's, what the trend is. But that's what I like to do. And I try to get through as many of them as I can, and, um, I can't, I, it's impossible. Uh, my job requires me to work some evenings. I work at a job where we run an operation from seven o'clock in the morning until ten o'clock at night, so, um, I'm not available every night, but, uh, I try to get as many as I can. Um, I would encourage everybody else to do the same.
Good evening. Just to be brief, I was, I'm Rosemary Eva, and I have been a volunteer for many years, and not at the moment, uh, but I certainly support Mr. Leonard's, uh, theory, and also Mr. Pelletier's. And I think for the boards and commissions, particularly the ones that, that don't get involved, that don't have to come before the council, I think it's very good to have the volunteer boards see a presence of a council member, to go meet and greet, sit in the audience, observe, make your own impressions, and then perhaps have a meet and greet of these commissions at some point in time. But, uh, to have somebody, I know we had, had in the past for the council to have a particular liaison, maybe it's necessary for a few, but, but most, I personally don't think so. Thank you.
I, I guess I have to say, I, I, I mean, first of all, we realize, of course, our town administrator is the first and foremost person to be coordinating with a lot of these things, but secondly, I'm not particularly troubled by the notion that we don't at least assign a liaison or a buds person to each and every committee. If, if it's important enough that it's in our charter and that we've asked people to volunteer for it, I'm not saying that I would be going to every cemetery commission, but at least somebody knows, you know, who to call, and so...
Well, if we can put a list together, I think what Mr. Pellet, I don't, I don't think Mr. Pelletier is really suggesting that we need a liaison to every one of the groups, and I don't think that, that would be realistic. We'd probably have to, what, we'd need four of us? Each one of us would have to have four, four committees.
No, I think about twelve is what I had in, in...
Yeah, I was going to say, the, and then I think we also have to have an understanding from Mr. Pelletier as to what he envisions the role of the liaison. There's one thing to go in there and sit and listen, and you're now well-informed about that committee or board. Uh, I think there are probably other assignments where you know your role is somewhat different. That, uh, at some point you're expected to be an advocate. You're supposed to, maybe even if you're a non-voting member, try to give some direction as to what's politically realistic for the town council that you have. I say that only based on the experience I had with a couple that I was appointed to, and I think I understood that that was sort of what my role was.
No, I, I envision this as sort of sitting in the back, you know, just to sort of taking notes and, and, and having a presence, and, and just showing the boards and commissions that there's somebody paying attention from the council, and, and if they have a question or a concern or an issue, that, you know, they at least know that, you know, Rob's been to these meetings, he understands the issues, maybe I can ask for his input or his advice, or, um, you know, that sort of thing. I don't, I don't foresee this as, you know, a non-voting member or anything like that, just somebody who, who, you know, like, I, I, I do, and a lot of people do, Cecil I see at a lot of meetings, you know, just sort of drop in, pay attention to what's going on, um, you know, say hello to people when, when it's over, and, and that's pretty much all I had envisioned for it, just in a more formal, sort of reliable, people know who's, who can, who might be showing up at their meeting, and, and that would be a good resource for them, I, I think.
Well, maybe that's our assignment, with nothing more formal than trying, over the next couple of weeks, to think of a couple of, of groups, the, where that would be helpful.
You know, and it, it might just be the, the ones you go to already, which is easy and, easy enough, just...
Can we get the master roster of all each and every single?
It's in your, it should be in your, it was handed out this evening.
Excellent. So this would be the same list that we can think about with the
Yep.
reporting policy, and maybe we can cluster them together by function as well, so.
Our last item in open session, the town solicitor announcement, comments, and questions.
Town administrator?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss?
Yeah.
Oh, you, it's a complete blank, but I'll, I'm, okay, Mr. Goncalo.
So that we can allow Mr. Cox to?
Oh, yeah. We just, yeah, I'm sorry. Bruce, I'm sorry. We just had this passed out, which I, I assume was the signal to me to finally call on you. But I guess the question that we now have, because you're asking for formal action on our behalf.
You have a meeting, if I'm not mistaken, on August 22nd?
We do.
Okay. If it could be sure to be put on that agenda, that'd be very helpful. It is, it is an issue that's of paramount importance on the waterfront. And I noticed the, notice you received, you got on Sept- uh, excuse me, August 4th, and in your posting, which is last Thursday, which sounds like a long time between five days to now, but there's a little holiday in the middle and it's a convenient time. They're took, they're literally proposing to close the river. With our understanding, no concession of reopening at any point during this time block. And the reporter, and I spoke briefly at the beginning, he approached me to see who I was and what was going on. And he said, "The powers that be say it's gonna be a month. The workers on the bridge say two months."
So it'll be three months.
So it'll be three months, possibly. Who knows what it'll be. But the point is, at this point, there's been no discussion with the stakeholders, the people on the water, your citizens, that are harmed by that, about what can be done as a concession or a compromise or open up the waterway. You have a number of boatyards down there. You have professional seamen that go out every, every day. That need to be addressed. As my understanding, there's a process of pushing this through the Coast Guard. The DOT asked this of the Coast Guard. I'm not sure I even have the right citation here. I learned of this last night at the end of our meeting. I typed this letter, literally last night at midnight, so this has come from time for me. The point is, it is something that needs to be addressed. We need to sort of bring this to the forefront, because it's obviously in your paper and people are upset. It's going to harm your waterfront people. And so we should make sure if we can obtain. Now, I understand there will be times when they need to close it. They're not doing, those are not tinker toys they're playing with. The fire chief, the volunteer fire chief and I were chatting, and he was telling when the Secana River Bridge was built, that they actually jacked up the arch, that one beam on the Portsmouth side fell and killed everybody on a barge. I mean, it's not lightweight stuff we're doing, no pun intended. But it should be addressed, that the town council should say, "We need to have a voice in the closure of this, and whether or not it can be opened or not, and not just carte blanche to DOT, to the Coast Guard, because Cardy wants to make a lot of extra money." God bless them for doing it. They're doing a great job. But nonetheless, we need to, you know, if you want to be pro-business, you need to be proactive and protective of that business. And that's basically what I'm asking that this council do. And if it can be on the August 22nd agenda, hopefully they don't close the bridge on August 23rd. Because it's, as I understand it, on either side of Labor Day, a few days. And Labor Day's not that far away.
So they want to close the Secana River for bridge construction for six weeks? Is that?
That's correct. That's on their notice. They're gonna close it to all traffic, completely close it. There'll be an emergency lane, I believe on our side, a river for the fireboat on a first responder basis, our harbor master, but there will not be general traffic. For obvious reasons that when they are, they're gonna have a total of, I believe it's eight barges there. Three crane barges, three supply, uh, three lift barges, and then supply barges. So they're gonna be a lot of activity there. But they are very droid at moving those barges. Charlie Smith, who's a continual visitor to our committee, tells us about how they moved one barge across river, down the road, and picked up an, you know, porta potty so they could have that out in a barge. He said it was amazing. They did this in the course of an hour and a half. So they can move these things. But to their convenience, if they can just block it all off, they'll want to do that. We're saying maybe it won't be just that convenient for you, because we have to address the convenience and the economic viability of the businesses that are, are on the waterfront there. You know, the timing is sort of rotten in many regards, because you do have the season of hauling vessels coming up right now. You know, that's September, October, and November is when they come out of the water. The busiest months in the world are Oc- September and October in any boatyard. If there are no vessels can come south, they'll go somewhere else. And you'll have, you know, some, some people here in this town suffer severe economic hardship. So it's, my point is, let's get Cardy and company to the table at least to discuss this. This may be the only way we get them to come to the table. Now, mindful of the fact I haven't called them, but they didn't exactly give us a lot of front notice.
Mr. Cox, was the public hearing, I'm sorry, with whom would that be? Is it the Coast Guard?
I understand that it would be with the Coast Guard.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So this suggests to me that August 22nd might be too late.
It may or may not be. But all we can do, the Coast Guard did say we need to check with some of the stakeholders. They called some of the boatyards and such. I don't know. And they all said, "This is terrible." But I don't know if the Coast Guard's taking any position at this point. But unless we say, "What is your position?", we want to have an input on that position, then we're just staying there with our, our hands behind our backs.
It seems to me this might qualify as an emergency item, then, that we can take action on.
Jim?
I was gonna say that before I was interrupting. I will tomorrow contact Cardy and the state DOT and set up a meeting for discussion. And if you'd like to be involved in it, Bruce?
I'd like to if I, if I can, you know, I'll have somebody there if I'm not there.
Okay. I can, I can certainly do that immediately. I mean, I don't know how quickly they'll be able to respond to a meeting, but I can do that tomorrow.
But can, let me ask, before we agree on an action, who has, first of all, who has the authority to close the river?
Coast Guard.
Coast Guard.
Coast Guard.
The Coast Guard, with no interaction with the governor, with no interaction with, with any other entity, they can close the river for construction?
They, they have to hold public hearings. There's federal laws that say they have to hold public hearings. But the US Coast Guard controls all navigable waters, and it's their sole responsibility. And they, they, speaking on behalf of the Coast Guard, they generally try to elicit input whenever they can.
So what is our avenue of influence with the United States Coast Guard?
Well, we have, we have a couple. As Jim just said, you know, the initiative to close it had to come from the construction company and/or DOT.
The construction company through DOT, yes.
So you could, you could, that would be one content point. And then the formal hearing would be the Coast Guard. And we don't have to be there in person. We can send written opinions. And they always, well, I shouldn't say always. Their normal procedure is they'll have a hearing where you may appear in person and testify. And then they have an open period where if you couldn't make the meeting, you can submit written comments. And depending on the scope of the issue, that period can be greater or lesser. But it's usually fairly lengthy. But with the Labor Day deadline, they don't have time to do a whole heck of a lot.
And that's the problem. That is, that is the problem. And that's why we're not necess- you know, you understand the bridge is going to be get, be built. But 24/7.
I would look for some type of compromise.
Exactly. But at this point in time, we're not even at the table.
Rather than close the whole river down, I would look for some type of compromise.
Well, they have, they evidently have to close it at certain critical times. And indeed, they'll even be closing, I guess, the Secana River Bridge itself, because they'll be lifting things that if an error happens, people will die if they're there.
Understood.
So they, but it's my understanding, the request is 24/7 for six weeks.
That's my understanding.
And that's absurd. That's absurd.
So what's the, what's the request? The que- the request that you would make to the DOT is to what?
We want both a public hearing, but you, you also want a letter of support from us?
A public hearing or at least some, some, some discussion with.
Closing it completely for several weeks.
I understand that. That's not, that's not my question.
I mean, they, they give us a schedule. They give us a schedule now with road closures and, you know, we update our website with the activity that's going on. They can certainly do the same thing with the river. You know, we expect to block off the river next Tuesday all day. Okay? Or next Tuesday and Thursday, next day, all day.
Or conversely, while they're doing this rather large lift and such, we will be open for this ti- these days or a bracket of these days. Some kind of concession, as contrasted with 24/7, six weeks.
Well, then, as I understand it, what our plan is, is to have Mr. Goncalo contact both Cardy Construction and the Department of Transportation.
That, and that's at least getting us to the table.
Schedule a meeting as quickly as possible. See if you're able to make that meeting. And maybe then we'll determine, that'll probably determine what our game plan is.
And we could, we could also get legislative input if, if need be with the Coast Guard.
That's right. I mean, if, what, I didn't hear in all of that the word "emergency." So if there's going to be a close, a shutdown in four weeks, right, then do we need to make an emergency out of this, to call attention to it in order to make sure that this, that they just roll over us? That's the point I'm trying to make.
I'm, I'm gonna contact them tomorrow, okay?
And that's why.
And state the urgency of having a meeting as soon as possible.
That's why my question is, are you looking for a letter of endorsement from this body that expresses concern on behalf of our?
Absolutely. And if you feel it needs to be deemed an emergency, it is an emergency to those who are in the waterfront. You know, those, those who are gonna be harmed by this. If there's absolutely no concession.
We should do a letter right now.
It would help support my.
This is a question for, we can call a special meeting, so I don't know how truly an emergency it is.
Well, there is, you currently have a meeting scheduled for Thursday.
Nope.
Right? The 18th, or next Thursday?
The 18th.
Between now and then, Jim can contact DOT and, you know, get a handle on that. I can go through the Coast Guard, because I was involved for years in appealing and dealing with and writing to the Coast Guard with regard to the LNG site, you know, a plan to site the, the offshore berth for the tankers. So I, I have access to the, you know, to them. I have contacts. So I can try to get some information in that regard. And then we could put this on the agenda for the 18th.
Is that settled on the 18th? I don't know.
Yeah.
One other, one, while we're passing out assignments, Bruce, do you, with the information that you get, do you want to draft a one paragraph letter that you think would be appropriate? I'm not saying it would be a final draft or anything, but something that we can look at, look at on the 18th.
Absolutely.
I think if we act on the 18th, we should, we should.
Well, I, I actually hope that Mr. Goncalo's contacted them, telling them that the council is moving forward in this way, will, you know, make the lights come on elsewhere, and he'll say, "What are you looking for?" Without the necessity of having a full, full formal hearing, but some kind of acknowledgement that these things will occur.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that we have a Plan B, just in case the meeting with Cardy and DOT gets us absolutely nowhere.
Do we have time to schedule a public hearing next, on next Thursday for a future date before our, our deadline here?
Well, we really don't need a public hearing.
I don't think, it's the Coast Guard hearing. If you're a letter to the Coast Guard or press to say, "We want to deem", and I'm, candidly, I don't know if we're outside our window. It's one of these things that pops up and you're like, "Wait a minute." And if we're outside that window, they very well may very well say, "You're outside the window." Or they may say, "Stop." And that might make Cardy, who's obviously, you know, this is, this is a democracy and this is capitalism. They want to make their money. That make them say, "What do you want?" And that's literally all we really need. We don't need a big public, this is not an LNG factory we're building. This is a bridge that's being built in an event that they're gonna do on our town. You know, if they're gonna block off both ends of a road, the people in the middle will be pretty upset.
We want our unrestricted general fund to be at 10%.
I think you're a little offside here.
Here's a, so just to wrap up what I think we've covered here, first, because I'd, I'd like to, first of all, move that we add to the agenda for tonight, the request of Mr. Cox and the letter that he's distributed.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
And then, my understanding is that although we're not taking a vote, it appears that the consensus of the council is that the town administrator and the town solicitor have the inherent authority to pursue action with the Coast Guard and DOT. We will add this item on the August 18th agenda. The harbor commission has certainly heard no objection from the council. So, you know, your inherent authority and your coun- you know, your commission certainly hasn't heard anything that would stop you from acting on your own.
We can move with 48 hours posting those.
Right. And then, the only other thing I would add is that I think the minutes should reflect that if this does develop into an, an emergency, that, that the council body would have no objection to the town council president acting on his own authority as the case may need to arise. If something has, I mean, if you, if there's a deadline of this hearing on like Wednesday, so is there any objection to that sort of statement of consensus?
And I won't act unless I've spoken to at least Mr. Roderick and/or Mr. Leonard, anything that I put out on my own. And I'll certainly be in consultation with Mr. Goncalo and Mr. Cox if some emergency does come up.
Thank you.
And Bruce, next time, let us know you're sitting there.
I had to wait until I became up on the, on the agenda.
Well, you're right.
That's all right. I'm used to these late nights. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
We can't vote on it. We voted to add it to the agenda, and the minutes can reflect no objection to it.
And under, I can come up with something. Under town solicitor?
Yes.
Can we just go back to town administrator for a minute?
No, it's blank.
It's, okay, go ahead. What it?
It's always blank.
No, it isn't.
No, it isn't.
No, it's blank.
Okay, just a, humor me. Just a few announcements. We had a surplus sale of old equipment. And it included vehicles. It included regular equipment. It included copy machines, bicycles, all types of, of stuff that we had. And we netted $7,402 from that, which I think is probably a pretty good record. The next item, our new pumper is scheduled for delivery late September. Recycling. This past July, we recycled 160, July 2010, we recycled 160 tons. This July, we recycled 172 tons. Quite an increase. Private trash collection. We have come to find out that there are 15 houses on this private collection that Patriots solicited, and they're paying $29 per month. And they use special totes so that there's no, no confusion as to any of this trash going into our landfill. Rhode Island Resource Recovery. Last year, we had profit sharing of $12,963. This year, on August 24th, there's going to be a check ceremony. And they have indicated that it will be in excess of what everyone received last year. So we're gonna hopefully get a check for a significant amount, more than $13,000. Everybody by this time must know that the Nanak Bridge is closed. They started construction on it today. It should be closed for 30 days, according to them, or maybe 60. Due to scheduling conflicts?
Who's day? Is, that's the Rhode Island, that's the state of Rhode Island, right?
Yes.
Because that's our Rhode Island road.
Yes.
A state road.
Right.
Okay.
This was applied for, I don't know, two years ago, three years ago. And it kept getting switched. getting switched. It went to, I had requested that the Secana River Bridge, not Secana, Jesus, no, the Naniquacut Bridge be a project unto itself, and they said, "We'll include it with the Colebrook Road Project in Little Compton." And then they said, "We'll include it in the Peckham Road Project in Little Compton." And ironically, I followed up on it periodically, and ironically, last Friday, I contacted DOT and said, "When are you gonna schedule this?", because I saw work being done in Little Compton and none here. And they said, "Well, absolute, we're gonna close it Monday or Tuesday." So it was very timely. The meeting that we had scheduled for August the 11th on labor, I have requested that that be postponed till August 18th due to conflict, you know, scheduling conflicts and vacations and surgeries on the part of some of the people, that that be granted August the 18th. And I understand that possibly that is going to happen. And I appreciate it and thank you. I have no more comments.
But I do have a few. And I've been sitting on them for months, so I have to knock them out. I'll be brief. It's been a while, but I still wanted to make sure that it was said on the record. Ms. Chather and I attended the high school graduation, which seems like so long ago, but we wanted to make sure that they were congratulated and heard that from the council. Mr. Leonard and I, if you remember some time ago, was at the Tiverton Prevention Coalition and wanted to mention that the following students received awards and we congratulate them, Andrew Enos, Brian Bean, William Blake, Margaret Massey, Emily Massey, Cynda Martin, and David Silver. Congratulations to them. And Ms. Rebecca Elwell for that, that was a nice ceremony, we appreciate the invitation.
And there was a young Mr. Enos also.
Oh, did I miss a name? Andrew Enos, yes. Yes, thank you. And finally, just appreciation to Mr. Goncalo and the fire chief, who, I had missed the fire department tour back on the budget committee, and they were gracious enough to, I think it was probably a two-hour personal tour. And the one thing I wanted to make sure that everybody in the town knew was that there were three fire stations in town, and when we were at the north fire station, it was this great example of our firefighters that put in, basically did the work themselves to put in a kitchen there with the counters and the cabinets and whatnot, and they do that on their time to sort of help things out for everybody. And then, fire station number two, we find, here they are doing electrical work on one of our command vehicles, which certainly isn't part of their job description, so they were also helping out the team. And then we went to the final one, and it's not done yet, but they're building the walls and drywall for a new bunk room. So it's always nice to report back with some positive things, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody had heard that they're doing a lot of work, extra work on the side, keeping costs down. Thank you.
Okay.
Town Solicitor now?
Town Solicitor?
I'm gonna pass around, these things came in after your packets were put together, responses. You do have in your packets the July 26th fact sheet from DEM. This is with regard to the Tiger Tree matter. As you know, there was a consent order entered in the DEM enforcement action, a consent order between DEM and James Pelletier slash Tiger Tree. Mr. Tights sent them a letter, sent DEM a letter indicating that we were not happy with some of the terms of the consent and seeing if we could have some input into that. There was a response to Mr. Tights. That is, that was this July 26th fact sheet. Also in your packet at K-1B is Andy's, a letter to DEM. We were informed by a neighbor of the, a neighbor of Mr. Pelletier or Tiger Tree, that he observed Mr. Pelletier taking yard waste into the property, and he wanted somebody to go, he wanted DEM to go and inspect it. I contacted Dave Chopie at DEM, he also had heard from the resident, and said that he would send an inspector the next morning. That inspector then informed the neighbor that he had found nothing unusual except yard waste, which was specifically excluded in the consent agreement, that Mr. Pelletier was not to be bringing in new yard waste. So in your packet, K-1B, you have Andy's letter to Dave Chopie and Susan Forsey at DEM, asking for an explanation of why the inspector felt this was not an issue, and what were they planning to do with enforcing their consent order. What I just handed out is a response from Mr. Chopie Friday, and attached to it is the DEM inspector's report of the inspection he made that following morning. And in, there's a photograph, and in the photograph, it says it's a pile of soil, rock, and tree waste. Mr., the top letter from Mr. Chopie in response to Mr. Tights's letter indicates that DEM considers tree waste to be different than leaf or yard waste, and therefore that wasn't a violation of the consent order. There are so many conflicting statements in the consent order, the fact sheet, and the letter from Mr. Chopie that, you know, it's, it's, it's just unbelievable. The bottom line is, we're still pushing DEM to enforce their consent agreement and to enforce their regulations. We also have prepared, and I don't know if Garrett has sent out a letter to Mr. Pelletier yet or not, indicating that regardless of what DEM thinks that he is allowed to do under their ord, regulations and rules, it doesn't affect what the town zoning ordinances are, and the town still considers him to be in violation of those ordinances. This matter is still in trial, and we still will be looking for a $500 a day fine at the end of the day. I've got depositions scheduled for next week to depose people that have been observed doing business at the site, and I have Mr. Pelletier's deposition notice. We're just gonna push this thing as quickly as we can to get it in, and have it be heard, have a trial before the judge to get a resolution to this, to try to, to end this situation.
And our last item under closed executive session, Mr. Leonard, do we have a motion for a closed executive session?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we go into executive session for litigation per general law, 4246582, Taggart Pelletier slash James Pelletier versus Tiverton.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
I also make a motion under litigation, 4246582, Bay Street, in reference to Envirologic.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
And finally, I make a motion, litigation requested by Mr. Coulter, again, general law, 4246582, discussion and approval of executive session minutes of special counsel meeting May 18th, 2011.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, at this point, we will go into executive session for those items.